But you can't feel, but what happens is I guess when you get so actually finally uh and they 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 lose so the not put it on the outside.
Thought I wasn't born in a third world.
Or is it supposed to do that? First or that white that not exactly red, red is that that is blood and white and it's cute. But that will dissolve and go away eventually. I don't know, it's trying to play. They cut her ear and you know, it's not gonna be like a rumor.
I had to call my mom and be like, I have a
Yeah, the ear was like cut off different levels. Just shave this side of her eyeball and like popping out.
So where did you go for hamburger dipperies?
We didn't.
You didn't?
Because we can't hurt. Up every four hours, one, I I'd offer him six dollars.
Hey. Have you worked for Delta? So we all need something that's awesome on Delta. Like you say, they
How we don't get any music, okay?
They were allowing to be something to
That's it. Why not? Because we can do it. In LA, well, I had it. I flew into LA, went to uh, flew over to Salt Lake and I had to do it. And then flew back home.
Oh, come on.
So why not? It's free. Yeah, but but he had a, he was like an S, whatever, so yeah, we've got a lot of them to that, but it's like in America, he was one. And that's what we got, yeah. Last year. Buy up for getting it. It was half a day.
Back in.
Maybe my four. Two thousand, you give yourself a good
Oh, thank you.
No, but two thousand really good. Yes. On Delta one to get the bit. I haven't guaranteed it.
How about money?
We didn't have to, we haven't had to. I mean, not, yeah.
Two thousand is still a lot of money.
Yeah, but it's like
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, Ms. Rodriguez, is she?
She went out to the car to get her budget.
Oh, okay. I'll wait for her then.
I don't know if Ms. Charles is coming.
Oh, Ms. Charles isn't here either, okay.
Up here?
I don't think so.
I don't see it.
Hope she's okay. I have not heard anything, so.
I'd like to be here.
Um, Ms. Charles is on uh, Chief's board, so you can call her and make sure she knows. Maybe she knows.
Oh, yes, that's, that's true. Angela had told me six and I said, oh, I think it's five thirty today. So I said, we're so used to it being six. Uh, Ms. Ms. Rodriguez has gone out to get her budget book. Uh, would y'all like, I'll just give another few thirty seconds or so. I think she should be right in. Oh, there's Johnny. Here she comes. Okay, we were waiting for you. Yes, ma'am, we understood that. Thank you so much. We didn't want to start without you and we'll go on in just a few minutes. Give that. Good afternoon and welcome to the Leon Valley City Council Special Meeting. Today's Tuesday, July ninth, twenty nineteen. It's approximately five thirty-four in the evening. Uh, I ha- we do have a quorum. All council members are present with the exception of Counselor Donna Charles. And I'm not sure if she's on her way, but we'll go ahead and begin. Uh, there's not a pledge of allegiance, but if you'll please stand, let's say the pledge and then we'll, we'll begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you. Just a few, again, repetitive housekeeping items about turning off your cellphone. I know I was guilty last time. Uh, also, if you have anything to say to your neighbor, if you'll just please step outside into the foyer and speak out there. Um, if you have an outburst or something like that, we'll have to give you a warning and we don't want you to leave, but um, just, I think, I don't think this is gonna happen so, but just want to give you that fair warning. Please, um, just, um, remain in control. Um, our local rules, again, allow us to get citizen input, not only at citizens be heard, but at any other time throughout the agenda. Uh, I will not announce it, but if you have something that you'd like to add after the staff presentation and council discussion, if you'll just raise your hand, we'd love to hear from you. Uh, that's what I love about Leon Valley. All right. So with that said, we move to presentations and presentation number one. Our presentation and the administration of the oath of the Leon Valley Assistant Chief, um, Eric Burnside, has been delayed until the next meeting. Chief Burnside's wife was delayed at work and she really, really wants to be here. So if there's no objection, we'll just move it to the next meeting. Thank you. Under presentation number two, uh, Ms. Posely, if you'll please read that ordinance.
Mayor, it's just a presentation, uh, it's a workshop presentation.
But it was a first reading, so that's what kind of drew me off.
Yes, ma'am. It's not the actual presentation of the ordinance yet. It's just the workshop.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead and read it? I wasn't, yeah, I, I saw ordinance, I thought, okay, that's, that's Saunders. Okay, so I'll go ahead and read it. Thank you. Presentation, discussion, and workshop on an ordinance approving and adopting fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budgets and associated capital acquisition plans and ratifying fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty general fund budget. Uh, this is the first reading as required by our city charter and our city manager, Kelly Counselor, is here this evening to present. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Council. Good evening, citizens, staff. Um, so, just a quick recap. I have already gone over the budget pretty extensively with, with each of you. Um, that was your option as to whether or not you wanted to come in and, and do that. And all of you took, took us up on that. And so some of this budget has been changed to include a couple of ideas that you all have thrown out there and I will try my best to point those out. So tonight is the first reading of the proposed FY twenty twenty budget. The second reading is August the sixth. You can decide after this reading whether or not you want to have a workshop, a second workshop, or if we need a second workshop on the sixteenth. That's council discretion. So we'll talk first about the general fund. Uh, quick overview, we're projecting a fund balance of about almost one point nine four one million dollars in the, in the capital reserve and about a million in the emergency fund, leaving almost three million dollars, um, in your fund balance. And you don't have your, do you have your budget books with you? Okay, so if you do, you're gonna find these in, under the general fund tab, that green tab, um, under general fund summary tab. And if you look on the third page, I think it is, those numbers should match. So one thing I want to mention about the capital reserve fund, it, it is up this year by about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The emergency fund is the same. Um, if you'll go to the next page. The emergency fund right now represents one month of operating income, but if you combine the two funds, they represent about two and a half months of operating income. You do have a city policy that says that after the audit, um, if there is savings, that you all can consider looking at putting more in the emergency fund if you so choose, but you want to do that once your CAFER has come out.
Ms. Counselor, could I ask you, what, um, what is attributed to the six hundred thousand dollar increase in our capital reserve fund?
Um, so one thing that I attribute, and as we come to a screen later on, I'll show you a little bit and give you a little bit more about that. But one thing is, don't for, don't forget you have a, a finance director and a city manager that are extremely conservative in their projections. And I'm gonna show you that on the screen in a little while, what we project versus what we really had.
But that's most of the six hundred thousand?
That's a big part of it.
Okay.
And plus, we are, yeah, that's a big part of it, but we'll get to that screen.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Good question. Um, as pre- as presented currently, the twenty twenty general fund budget is balanced. And we're gonna go into the revenue side, um, under that same tab. Operating revenues are about twelve and a half million. To fund the twenty twenty general fund budget, um, we can just leave the tax rate exactly like it is. We'll just leave it the same. The tax components are below. M and O is your maintenance and operation rate. INS is your interest and sinking fund. That's your debt service. So that's everything that it takes to pay the city's debt for the FY twenty twenty year. Uh, once again, Bear County projects an increase in tax value. You see it right there, um, by about sixty, almost sixty-six million dollars. It's yet to be determined the amount we're gonna lose to appeals. That should come at the end of July. Um, but right now, currently, uh, for nineteen, we lost about thirty-eight, seven in appeals. Ad valorem revenue for tax year twenty nineteen increased, um, by about three hundred and nine thousand dollars over twenty eighteen. After we received the effective and the rollback tax rate calculations, as we talked about in our budget meetings, this could change. Um, I think, I always want to attribute this to Ashley, am I right? Was this an Ashley idea? Cause I think it was a good idea. Um, are you in here, Ashley?
Thank you.
Great idea. So I like this screen a lot. Um, there's a couple of screens in here that I've not thought of putting in. One of them, Ashley, and one of them is Mayor Riley's. But this one for Ashley shows you, as a homeowner, it breaks down your tax bill. And it shows you how much is actually going, for instance, in Leon Valley to Northside or any schools, for the most part. How much is going to Bear County? How much goes to City of Leon Valley? And so on and so forth. Um, but just so taxpayers understand, that property tax bill that you get every year, Leon Valley gets about twenty percent of the tax bill. And so that's why, that's what made House Bill two so interesting this year and why cities were so involved and why you saw T M L so involved. Because you saw the big push for tax reform, yet it didn't apply to counties and it didn't apply to the schools. And so the cities did not feel like this was true tax reform when it applied to twenty percent, um, of the tax bill. Average, average taxable home value increases in Leon Valley, and these are determined by the Bear County Assessor's Office. What you see is about a seven point six percent increase up there in value. And then, of course, if you, um, look at what your actual increase is in dollars, it's about seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents, still logically a seven point six percent increase. Tax rate history. Um, so this is one of the things that I was talking about. I'm gonna get my cellphone real quick so I can see. There's not enough light right here. Or can somebody turn on a light? These small numbers. Okay, oh, that's good. I can see. Thank you. Is that okay? Can everybody else see the screen? So this is your tax rate history. Um, and if you look at twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, um, look at, do you see how your INS went down from zero point seven seven eight four, eight, seven to zero point six seven? Okay, so if you were to look at our presentation the year before, we would have carried it straight across, just like we did this time. So although we're projecting the same INS rate, it's not gonna be the same INS rate because we're gonna make a payment this year on our debt services. So next year, you'll see that go down again. But since we don't have a true number, we just do the safe thing and carry it over. So I think that's, that's always kind of stuck out to me. INS is not, it's not gonna stay consistent as long as we continue to, to pay our debt. And then the, um, M and O rate, of course, we left the same. Um, and the, we expect the M and O rate to stay the same. Outstanding debt, uh, we knocked one off last year and so we're down to these three. We have your P P F C O bonds, which purchased the ladder truck that you probably saw out at the Fourth of July. The twenty twelve G O bonds, um, that is what funded this building, police and the fire, um, the administrative complex and the renovations. And then you had certificates of occupancy, um, which this council had to do on your two wells that, um, were duct taped and stapled together. Um, so you all put in brand new water wells and you actually got, for the, for that time of year, for twenty sixteen, you got a three point five percent interest rate on that. On your twenty twelve G O bonds, you're at a two point four, five percent interest rate. And then your average rate on the two thousand nine P P F C O is anywhere between two and four point two percent.
Okay.
And I don't know which council asked it, the, asked the percentage questions, but um, I know that was a council ask.
Um, it says call option twenty nineteen. Does that mean we can pay it off in twenty nineteen for six hundred and thirty-five thousand?
It does mean you can pay it off, but I believe interest would be added to that.
Yeah, I think that wouldn't be the goal of the time to go to the profit, because you would call option line and it would cost a few more.
Because interest will have accrued.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be six thirty-five plus whatever your interest is.
Okay, and if we, if we don't take that option this year, when is the next time?
Anytime.
Oh, it's anytime.
After that year, it's anytime.
Anytime, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Projected revenue increases. Sales tax, we're expecting, or we're projecting a moderate increase of two and a half percent. Economic development sales tax, same thing, two and a half percent. Um, of course, you all know that's lower than what we actually saw last year. Um, ad valorem taxes, seven point one seven percent. Go to the next one. Um, impound lot auctions, we are expecting an increase of about forty-two thousand. Red light camera fines, we're still looking at trending with an increase because this council added three new cameras. Um, and last month's collections were really, really good. Um, so we, we went ahead and just left that alone. Uh, we did put our notation, that we try to put in everything, that although we, we project an increase, you can only use the red light camera funds for administrative and traffic safety programs. Um, so it has no affect necessarily on the general fund. Interest income of about thirty-five thousand dollars. I always try to do this. Your finance director is very good at keeping the minimum cash, amount of cash on hand that she needs to and throwing the rest of your money to text pool, or the taxpayers' money to text pool, so that you earn interest. Um, and she is much better than my previous finance officer, so I, I took note of that immediately. Um, building department, that means the, uh, revenues from permit fees, occupancy fees, municipal court fines. Uh, bottom line is, we have more traffic officers on the street now. We actually are out there patrolling, uh, because we're able to, because we're paying for that out of red light camera funds. Um, so that added, I think, three new officers. Expenditure highlights, we have operating expenditures of about twelve and a half million. That's an increase of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. I will show you the increases as we skim through all the expenditures, uh, but it's primarily personnel cost and contractual. Capital expenditures, however, you're gonna see a significant decrease, a decrease of six hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. And I, I really have to compliment the council on this one because every time these directors have come forward and have been able to articulate why something is necessary in capital, you have supported them. And I, I really appreciated Counselor Alcazar the other day. She, she has a concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern, about Public Works in that they keep getting more land and more things, but we're not increasing their employees. And so I'm right there with her. We have increased them by one, by the way. Um, but Melinda did not ask for additional staff and, and so when, as, when Melinda tells the story, she says, city council is giving us better equipment and equipment that's easier to use and so we're working smarter, not harder. Um, and so literally, as I go back and look at history, you all have approved everything that Public Works and the Fire Department have asked for in capital. And both Chief Naughton and Melinda are very happy with their capital and what they have to work with, that, you know, that, that the citizens have given them. Uh, but this year, we did see even, even honoring what everybody wanted in capital, we still saw that decrease of six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So this slide was requested by Mayor Riley, and actually Mayor Riley and I have been talking about this for a year or more now. Um, because we've been watching the historical trend of attorney costs. So when we had the outside attorney in two thousand and fifteen, I really didn't like that number and felt like an outside attorney would actually reduce that number, and it did, um, in two thousand and sixteen. But the last three years, it has not reduced. Um, in fact, we've, it's been one forty-three, one twenty-eight, and two oh three. And so even if you take out the, the recent expenditures of the Martinez case, you would take out fifty or sixty thousand dollars, you're still at a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. No, actually, cause this was before the latest invoice, so you're still out a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And so it doesn't make a difference. Um, I can tell you that staff loves to be able to run in and get contracts done and approved right there. Um, but when you look at historical costs, um, it, you know, it doesn't add up. It has been a huge convenience, but I think this slide is important because you need to make a polit- policy decision about how you want to handle that. And I can, I'm able to answer any questions you might have about that, but I think that slide is important because the way that your budget is right now is you have budgeted a city attorney. So if you decide you want to budget outside counsel, we'll need to change that. Um, economic development director.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Counselor Martinez.
Mayor, Counselor Martinez, yes.
The one, the one reason
Can you go back?
I would prefer, uh, an outside counsel like we had, uh, Denton Navarro before, is they had one attorney assigned to us, but they have, what, twenty attorneys? And, uh, each one of them is experienced in a different, uh, phase of law or their specialty. So, you know, if we had a, uh, an unusual problem, the attorney could go to the group and say, hey, our, hey, Bob, uh, we have this issue in Leon Valley. Give me your advice. And, you know, they can pull the resources and, uh, I think we get a higher level of response.
And if that's your, you know, if that's your, your desire, if that's what you want to do, um, then what I would do honestly is an internal policy, putting the reins on staff calling, um, the city attorney. Um, I would have them go, like, for instance, if Brandon had a question, I would have him come to Melinda and me first, just to make certain that it's not a question. Cause that's what I was seeing back there in fifteen that was really bothering me, was staff questions that could have been answered administratively and it really, it wasn't necessary. Um, and so I actually did send out an email stopping it. Um, but there's a lot of questions that go, that were going in two thousand and fifteen to the city attorney that did not need to go to the city attorney. Um, so we would need to handle that internally.
Uh, Counselor Alcazar.
How, how much, uh, would we budget? How much in this have we budgeted for the combined attorney and how much would we budget for just the outside attorney?
So for the outside attorney, my suggestion would be to go with the one eighteen plus the cost of livings for one, two, three, four years. And then you're gonna have to put some extra in there next year probably for some litigation. Um, but, uh, yeah, so it wouldn't be two oh three. Like, I know that. Um, I'd have to sit down and, and work it and look at it, but that's my guess, you know, my, so plus or minus, um, one eighteen plus, you know, I don't know, two, three percent maybe each year, two and a half, three percent each year.
So you're looking more at like a hundred and fifty thousand?
That's what I'm thinking, is a hundred and fifty.
And so if we stayed with the city attorney, it would be, you would start with the one thirteen or would you start higher?
So if, if we stayed with the city attorney, it, if you stayed with the city attorney, it would be, well, it'd be more than one thirteen oh three seven. It'd be that plus two percent. Or did you, does that include the two percent? It does? Okay, so that's what it would be for the city attorney. Um, but if, so two thousand and nineteen, what we would basically do is put one fifty for outside attorney, zero for city attorney, and then your total on the side would be one fifty. Okay, so, so right now, your actual cost is one thirteen, zero through seven. You need to add two percent to that, so you need to add twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars to that. Um, so it would be a hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars or so, um, right now for FY twenty twenty.
But you always have to allow some for outside attorney because it's always there.
That's right. That's exactly right. But you would just put it all in outside attorney and eliminate the position, or you keep the position. Um, like I said, staff is not unhappy with the position. This is literally a policy decision, um, and I think we need to be transparent. We need to be transparent, um, to the community so that they understand what it's costing them and, and you all make a policy decision and, you know, whatever that might be. But it is, it is important, especially because I am the one who said that I thought that we could reduce the cost. And I was very happy after the first year that we did reduce the cost. However, I was wrong after that. Um, the cost actually went up.
Excuse me, uh, does the city attorney's column include benefits?
Yes, that includes benefits.
Oh, everything, okay.
It does not include, like, travel and training and that kind of stuff, but it does include benefits.
All right, thank you.
Um, any other questions on that? Okay, then I have the, uh, economic development director position. And I, was it you, Mayor, that asked me to chop it up like this? Okay.
I just wanted to see what the difference was. I thought we had a discussion last year about going forth with the business relations special, like we have on the right-hand side, where it's twenty-five, forty-one, and twenty-five. And we were gonna reassess it this year, so I just was wondering what the cost would be.
So if you got one position that was certified with no experience with benefits, market is dictating about a hundred and thirty-one eight. If you got one position plus, I thought, did you say five years of experience, Crystal? I don't remember. Cause we were looking at adding some years on there. Every year.
That's four hundred and forty-five dollars. That's what she would be, with benefits. You have to include health insurance and the taxes and all that on that. So it'd be like ninety something.
And she was certified? And she was certified?
She was, I, to be honest.
I don't think she was.
I don't think she was.
Excuse me, Chris, excuse me, Crystal, we're not getting any of your.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So we, in order to get a cer, like, just a benchmark, I did it, as if she was here, she had the years of experience, you know, she's been compared to on and off, and I thought, okay, well, if she would have stayed here, what would we be paying her?
Okay.
And so base salary would have been like 90 something, and then when you add benefits and stuff to it, they come up to that.
And so that's with years of experience. And then the way we have it now, it costs $130,000, and that's 25% city manager, 41% business relations, and 25% special events. So you wanted to see the breakdown, and there's not a really big story to tell there, I don't think. It's just going to be council preference.
I guess the other thing is that I had, as I look at that, so if you have a ED person on the left, would you still need to have somebody for the codes or the CFOs on the right?
You would definitely need a business codes person, absolutely.
So that's another, that's another cost that's not in there.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yes, ma'am. And you also, you know, I guess, as far as I know, the special events coordinator would also stay 25% in the ED, that, they do ED stuff. So I guess they didn't have, didn't have to. We could put them back into the general fund.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then we did take this to the ED/CD Advisory Board. I think Geraldine may have commented on this, I'm not sure, but their recommendation was to, because last year, what we explained to them is that we were going to try the business relations specialist for a year, see how we thought it was working out. And he's been here six, seven and 1/2 months, I think. Is that right, Will? I think he's been here seven and 1/2 months. And so, in fact, he's doing a presentation to you next month on, the audit is now complete.
Good.
So you'll get that. So that's another policy decision that we just want to bring to your attention, just like the attorney is.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilor Martinez. Appreciate your help.
There's a couple of things that could change a little bit in this diagram. If we, well, one of the things is, how many departments do we have, eight or nine?
I have to get my organizational chart, but that sounds about right.
Well, shouldn't your salary be divided among all eight or nine instead of 25% of your salary coming from ED?
You don't, you don't divide it like that because we don't have, you, it's either general fund or enterprise fund or the ED tax for anybody. That's like fire, all fire and police, with the exception of the grants, are all paid for out of the general fund. So you wouldn't divide me in departments, you would just divide me, like, between general fund and enterprise fund, is how it would work.
Well, you know, well, that's not the way, where I've worked before, the manager salary came, they piecemealed everything. Rent came, you know, like, my loaded rate when I was a technician, my salary plus my benefits plus part of the rent plus part of the management fee, plus every, you know, every little thing that they could check off added to my loaded rate. So.
I think the difference is, I mean, you're talking the business world, I'm talking government, and in government, there's, you have one fund, the general fund, and then you have the enterprise fund, which is operated like a business. And so you don't separate, like, we separate it by department, so we say manager and council is one department, municipal court is one department, fire is one department, library is one department, but it's all funded out of the general fund.
It's all funded out of the general fund.
Right.
I agree, but here, 25% of your salary is taken out of the money allocated to EDC.
Because I'm doing so much ED.
And.
Correct.
Okay, with a, with a director, if we hired a director, that would.
That would remove that.
Would remove that.
Mm-hmm.
And, but then again, I, I think the business specialist position, I like what he's doing. The only thing is, his job description is about that long. You name it, I'm surprised washing windows isn't one of his duties, but he does have a lot of duties.
He does, he's a busy guy.
And it appears like he, from what I understand, he does a good job at it, but, you know, the mindset from doing code enforcement and doing his other duties and economic development are like night and day. That's why I would like to see the Economic Development Director being completely separate, and like I've said it before, that position, you really need someone that's really personable and outgoing and, almost like a cheerleader, because basically, that's what they are, is a cheerleader for Leon Valley and, you know, waving flags and doing their best to get businesses to move in here.
So that, that's again, a policy decision of the councils.
Okay, okay, that's just, that's just, that's just my, my ideas.
And that's why we've separated it like that, that way you can see what it looks like, and.
Just talking about your percentages, so what, what are your percentages? So 25% ED, and then I know you have some in the enterprise fund?
There's some in the enterprise and some in the general. She's going to have to look that up, because I don't have it memorized.
Just so we can, can let people know how you're funded, how your position's funded.
So she is the 25% in manager and council, and then 25% in the ED, which comes out of the ED sales tax.
And then the remainder of hers comes out of the water in the sewer.
So 25 out of general fund, 25 out of ED, and then 50 out of enterprise.
Okay, so the manager council is the general fund.
That's the general fund.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so there's something, another policy decision we'll need to get through before this budget is adopted. Fund balance history. Next slide, thank you. So this is, this is interesting. If you look at the 2018 to 2019, you see that drop right there? That is the William Rancho case, the fire truck, the $500,000 on the Evers Road Bridge. So you see that significant drop, but do you see, 2.6? There's another drop in 2020. It's not going to be that significant. And the reason I say that is because last year's budget in 2019, we had a projected $1.4 million, and look at that, we ended up at 2.8. So right now, that last stair step doesn't look very pretty, it's not going to be that.
It's going to be higher.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay.
Just want to make sure you understand that, so it doesn't look like the general fund. I mean, there, there's an absolute, very solid reason from '18 to '19 why you see that. And the other thing that you're going to see is capital in Leon Valley is now coming out of capital. The budget is now being done right. So anytime you spend capital money, it's going to come from your fund balance, which is where it's supposed to come from.
But if we do have a, a drop, even though it's not going to be as significant, what would that be attributed to?
Capital items, that were purchased, that you approved in the budget. Yes, ma'am?
All right, thank you.
Your general fund budget summary, all that is, is the total of your operating revenues, and if you add your revenues to the capital reserve, so you see underneath revenues, we spent 700, or we're proposing to spend 725,000 in capital funds, so it would be a total resources of 13,200. And expenditures, if you look at operating and capital outlay, so you see your capital outlay matches both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, you have 13,259. So we still have a little bit of money in resources after you deduct the expenditures. Yeah, about 23,000, that's right. General fund revenue summary, you see projected increase in property taxes and sales taxes there. You see that decrease in franchise fees. That is due to the new legislation. We used to be able to get franchise fees if, if residents had cable and AT&amp;T phone all running in our right-of-way, we should be able to get franchise fees on that. But what the bill did is it made us lower the two of the telecommunications franchise fees, so that they were only having to pay one. And so that's why you see a $73,000 hit in Leon Valley. And I think you were told in San Antonio, it's millions of dollars, the hit. I forgot how many millions, but it's big.
So they reduced it from 2.5 to 1%? And that's what the loss is?
What, you know, the law says you have to eliminate the lower of the two.
Oh.
That's what the law says. And our lowest one was that amount. And so she's reduced our franchise fees by that amount.
But we will be getting some revenue.
Absolutely. You see the revenue, all that, the revenue that we're projecting in the 1920 budget is $926,000 versus the $934 that you received the year before, if you just walk backwards on that thing.
Okay, thank you.
License permits, fees and fines, that's your red light camera and your impound lot. Increases in court fines, planning and zoning increases in that office. And then other grants, that's the ambulance supplemental payment program grant. And each year, we continue to see a decrease in that grant, and it has nothing to do with performance. That is a formula grant. And so as more and more municipalities or communities find out about the ambulance supplemental program, more are using it, so our percentage continues to be reduced.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
With the franchise, I know this is a completely different topic, but what do we have to do if, let's say, one of the carriers or even CPS wants to put in a new electric line or, you know, aerial? Can we, do we have to pass an ordinance requiring any new or any substantial upgrades have to be underground?
Mayor, Councilor Martinez, I don't know that answer. I don't have that piece of legislation in front of me, and it would probably also require that legislation plus some, some city attorney help. So I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, but I will get it to you.
But it'd be nice to, if we can pass something or, you know, require in the future, you know, as any changes come about, we force the utilities to bury them and really clean up Banderas.
And I did get a quote on burying those utilities, because it's something I've wanted to do since the first time I drove around Leon Valley, and it's about $1 million a mile. And so the neat thing about this is that when Banderas Road is redone, that will be included, or we're going to hope that's going to be included, as part of the transformation of Banderas Road, is that those utilities will go underground. And even if that's not part of the quote, as it's torn up, it's a perfect time to bury them anyway. So even if you had to come up with some money to do it, it would be worth it, because it wouldn't be $1 million a mile at this point. If you did it today, right now, it would be $1 million a mile.
Okay, Kelly, I had another question on the grants now. It doesn't include CDPG, does it? Because we don't know if we're going to get a grant next year.
That does not include CDPG.
Even though we've applied, right?
I'll, I'll show you in a little bit. We actually included that, but told you there was a grant pending.
Remember from our discussion. Okay, but you will show us where the CDPG grant.
I believe that's still in there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be, yeah, exactly, it'll be in the water fund.
Okay, water fund.
Okay, so general government expenditures include municipal court, finance, manager and council expenditures. And what you see there is a decrease in personnel services by almost $25,000, same in supplies, but an increase in contractual services and a little increase in capital. And if we go to the next page, I'll be able to explain why. You go to the third item down, you see judges' fees increased by $4,800 and jury trials increased by $1,200. We're seeing more cases. How, have we had four jury trials this year? We've had four jury trials in 2019, whereas years before that, we had, this, this community had gone years without having a jury trial. So now, all of a sudden, we're having jury trials, which requires more money there and more judges' fees. We also included another $1,000 for judges, extra judges' meetings, because they have extra, extra court days. Bench trials, they stayed the same. You see a decrease in our Limebarger fees. You see an increase in the officers for jury and the bench trials, and that's again, there's more traffic and there's more trials in there. That's what all of this is about. The bailiff, what is being proposed is contractual money for a bailiff so that officers are not, we're not having to switch officers out all the time, but sometimes we actually have an officer that's a bailiff versus somebody that might be there testifying or something like that, acting as the bailiff. You see a decrease in, you see the Tyler software, a decrease of $3,000. That's because that can actually be funded out of court technology. So we're going to go ahead and take that off of the taxpayers' back. $4,000 decrease in in-code, same exact reason. We can move that to the court technology fund, which for the new counselors, and I think you already know this, but that comes from traffic fines and citations. $1,500, same exact thing. You see that reduction? That's going to get moved to the court technology fund. And if you go a little bit below here, you see how printing increased by 5,700 cases, I mean, dollars. So we have 400 cases every week. We used to have 200 cases every other week. So that means you used to have 400 cases a month, you now have 1,600 cases a month. So your citations have go up, which means your tickets go up, which means your case jackets for your files go up. So, you know, with, with increased patrol and increased tickets come increased court technology revenue, but it also comes increased expenses with printing. Travel and training, what we're trying to do is get three clerks to five clerks, all to their next certification level. So the municipal court clerks can take certification levels, they can become a municipal court clerk, one, two, three, is it all the way up to five? Or four? Five, I think it's five. And so we're trying to get everybody each year, one more step up in, in being certified. And so that's why you see, we now, we went from three clerks to five clerks, and two of your clerks are out of red light camera funds.
Okay, on the Limebarger fines and fees, it's no longer there, but did it move someplace else, like the court and technology? I mean, we're still going to do collections, aren't we, on, on the tickets?
We moved that to court technology.
To court technology?
I can't remember what we did with it.
And the issue with Limebarger is, it's a pass-through fee, and if you remember when we, when we first started it out, there was a certain year back, if they collected, we had to pay the fees. Well, they've gotten past that now, so majority of the fees are pass-through fees. We're not paying like what we used to, because we've hit that mark past to where what's being turned over to them is now what we can legally do as a pass-through fee.
Okay. So we don't have any budget items now, because it's all paid by the person who owes it, correct?
Correct. They, they.
They pay Limebarger, and then they pay the city.
There is some in there.
Yeah, they put some in court technology, just in case.
Oh, just in case.
But the reason why, if you, if you remember how it was so large before, that's why.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it used to be when we first started out, how many years ago?
Long time. I just remember that first year, they collected like $1 million back. Do you remember that?
Yes.
I mean, it was a huge windfall for the city to, to bring them on, and they went and collected all these old tickets. It was, it was amazing, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, general government finance, there's really not a story to tell here. The software update that you see there of $1,000 is, it's them paying their portion of the software. I don't, oh, 50, the audit increase by $50, that's really the only story to tell.
Trying to build there.
Yeah, exactly. Finance is kind of boring.
We're not boring. We like cameras.
General government, manager and council. If you look at this one, we have the city attorney, the TML, non-retainer request and project, so we put $20,000 in there. And what is that? That's when we request a TML attorney and we have to pay a deductible. We didn't have anything in there, and we ended up needing it. Everything else stays flat until you get to barcom. And so the reason barcom increased is because we didn't have them for a full year last budget year, but this is for a full year. And that's manager and council's portion. Everything else is little until you get to the AC maintenance, and that drops significantly. And that's just because with Sandra and Melinda's help, we just did a complete overhaul on the air conditioners here, so they should not need maintenance next year. You also see the software upgrade, that decreased by $3,140. Utilities, just historical spending, 1,200. Utilities, just historical spending, twelve hundred dollar decrease. Printing, you see a significant increase in there. And that was, that is in the event that your citizens want to amend the Home Rule Charter. We want to make sure there's plenty of money in there for the printing of that and for that to be able to go out to the citizens. And advertising, you're a home rule city now, and what we're finding is we're publishing more ordinances. And so just historical spending, we need to increase that one. Subscriptions and publications increased by almost a thousand dollars. We're trying to get law and election manual, an HR legal update manual. And, oh, I know what else is coming with this, Microsoft renewal for all of your laptops. Police expenditures have an increase of about sixty thousand in personal services. And I'll just say this one time because from now on out, you're probably going to see most increase in personal services. That is due to a two percent merit, a two or two and a half percent cost of living. I can't remember. Two percent cost of living, seventeen percent projected increase in insurance for everybody in that category. Supplies, you have more people there now. So we look at historical spending, what they've used. Contractual services, you have an increase, but, well, we'll get to that in a little bit. I'll go to the next page. And capital, you see a decrease of fifty thousand dollars. Their fifty thousand dollars last year was not actually for the police. It was actually the forklift for the impound lot. If you remember, they paid for half and then you all had water and sewer, the enterprise fund, pay for the other half. So Public Works use that. Is that right? No, they paid for it alone and Public Works get to use it. That's right. Okay, so they paid for the forklift for the impound lot, but Public Works is getting to use it as well because right there across the street. So it's used for the impound lot, but our Public Works guys have been able to use it. So that's what the capital was this year. This year, they don't have any capital that they're asking for out of general fund. Instead, they're doing it through other funds, and it's going to be forfeiture funds, and we'll talk about that a little bit later.
And, excuse me, how many employees represent Personnel Services in this general fund budget of police? Because I know we've got some here, we've got some in the red light camera, we've got some in the other 1A cent.
She's going to have to look it up because I don't know. This is just general fund?
Well, I understand because, you know, we've got red light camera and then we've got the other 1A cent special crime control that we have personnel over there. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what's budgeted from each. And do we have anything budgeted out of forfeiture?
Yes.
So, you know, I'd just like to see that breakdown. I think it would be important.
Basically, this is the easiest way for me to go and tell you.
But if you just want to get it to us before the next reading, that's fine.
It's actually in your budget document?
Yeah, we can get, it's inside of your book. I just don't have a book.
Just give me the page number.
It says police.
There's a tab that says police.
And you go, I'm sorry, my allergies. The very first page where it says police summary, it shows everything.
It's actually the second page. Second page under police, that'll show you.
Forfeiture, crime control, red light camera, impound lot.
Forty-four.
Which one?
Yes, sir. That's it. I should say, police summary, general fund, what you should be looking at.
Police summary, general fund, okay. I couldn't find it.
It's under the first white tab.
Oh, there's nothing. Oh, it's that one. Okay. Thank you. So if I go to each impound lot, we have also personnel under that?
Yes, there's two, and if you look at that page, it shows at the bottom, impound lot officers, two.
I see.
There's two, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that information. Yes, it sure does.
Okay, but what we're looking at right now is general fund for police. And you see an increase, thank you, sir. You see an increase of about sixty thousand dollars in personal services, increase in supplies, increase in contractual services, and then the decrease in capital that we just talked about. So then if we pick apart the police expenditures, you see a reduction in about twelve hundred dollars for the EAP and cafeteria plan. That's distributed elsewhere. You see towing expenses have completely been eliminated because they're paid for a different way now. If you look at this one, this one struck me. It's not any different than it was last year, but it just seems high to me. The cable and the Wi-Fi service is thirty-five hundred dollars, but that's for the whole building. So I don't know, it's just something that kind of stuck out to me. But that's what the bills reflect. And then the CAD system, the service contract for them goes up about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Leeds actually goes up about a hundred dollars. And then look at TransUnion. We eliminated that because what we're trying to do is get the investigators a new search engine instead of TransUnion that's called ClearProflex. They are really super excited about this new search engine. It does lots of cool things. And it's lots faster than Leeds online, and it gives them a lot more information. It's more thorough. There is, you have the Humane Society that is now under the police department's budget. The animal boarding went up about seven hundred dollars. The TC LED renewal stayed the same. The Windows update, it goes, they're literally going to take their computers from Windows Seven to Windows Ten. And if you, if we do all police department computers, that'll cost about fourteen thousand dollars. That is all the software that's needed to upgrade to Windows Ten, and then some of them are going to need some hardware because I guess their computers can't handle Windows Ten? That's my understanding. Am I right? Okay, that's what I thought. Just making sure. Right. So utilities, the reason you're going to see telephone go up for both police and fire is because they need to go to the first net system. And what the first net system does is it gives law enforcement and first responders first priority as they're calling in to the nine-one-one system so they can't be overridden by another caller. And that'll be in the fire budget as well. So police, your capital items, they're not out of general fund. You have red light camera, an attempt to get one patrol vehicle out of tier-two funds for forty thousand dollars. And out of police forfeiture funds, three detective vehicles and three patrol vehicles. Major items under police, your contract is now increased for ATS because you added three additional cameras. So it's almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Police red light cameras, tier-one, you see the seventy-seven thousand dollars under contractual. That's your increase in your extra cameras. Tier-one, if you go down to contractual services there, as we itemize it, seventy-nine-five for the extra cameras. You see a deduction of three thousand dollars. We eliminated red light camera collections completely. Computer maintenance has an increase. You see copier maintenance, they didn't have anything in there last year, so they put fifteen hundred in it this year. Five thousand dollars increase in repairs and maintenance external. That is because the traffic vehicles will now be taking their, all of their units to a local vendor here in Leon Valley for regular service and fluids and oil changes, tires, that kind of stuff. Travel and training, we completely eliminated that, and we didn't use it this year as well. And the reason for that is because it did not seem responsible to go to the red light camera training so we could see what all the new, you know, toys and goodies and cameras and views that they have because we knew that Senate bill, I forgot the number already, was very active in Texas. And sure enough, the red light camera bill passed. And so it would not have been responsible to use that money and get trained on more red light camera devices when we knew that there was risk of losing that in the state of Texas. So we did not attend any of the conferences, but that money set aside was originally for the mayor and the police chief and one officer to go one year, and then the next year, like maybe the mayor pro temp, the assistant and officer to send like three people each year. So we just completely eliminated that. We didn't use it this year and we're not using, last year, and we're not using it this year. So we eliminated that completely. Tier-two. In tier-two, you have one lieutenant, one traffic investigator and four officers. So you have six positions in tier-two. Under capital, actually, we can go to the next page for that. But you see that forty thousand dollar, or actually see a two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollar decrease in capital. But the one thing that they are asking for in this budget is forty thousand dollars, and it's for a vehicle. Last year, under that two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, that's when you guys approved the in-car camera systems, the, oh, the traffic light at Exchange Parkway and the Jaws of Life and two new vehicles. So this year, it's one vehicle. So we got pretty much everything we needed last year. That's why, that's so significantly reduced. Tier-two, under utilities and telephone, you see the increase of three thousand dollars. That's the part of the phone bill used by the red light camera personnel. And we're allowed to charge that to tier-two. Impound lot expenditures, now we have two full-time persons, the impound lot. First year, we had, this is actually our first year, you all wanted a standalone budget. We had the impound lot because it's part of the general fund. We just had it included in the general fund budget. You asked for a standalone with the impound lot so you could see what it looks like. This is what it looks like. Two full-time employees, their supplies and contractual services. If you go to the next page, it's itemized for you. Fifteen hundred towing expenses, eight thousand legal notifications and four thousand for advertising. Under our fire department, you see an increase. There's no extra people in Personnel Services, but you see the increase that I told you you're going to see everywhere under Personnel Services. Thirty-two thousand dollar increase in supplies. That's for two new computers, a new notebook, four sets of bunker gear, that's costing around ten thousand dollars. Fire prevention materials for the school and a five percent increase in EMS supplies. Increases went from, our EMS calls last year went from seventy-one percent to seventy-nine percent. So that's why he's asking for a five percent increase in supplies.
How many calls did they run last year?
He's, he'll actually do a report on that, but do you remember?
That's quite a bit for a small city. Just out of curiosity, are they still, is UNM, not UNM, University Hospital, still using you as a training facility for people going through paramedic school?
The current contract we have is with San Antonio College. That's where the students that ride with us are from.
So that's free labor.
And free training. Under fire department contractual, you'll see the increase that you see in most other places for the EAP and cafeteria plan. You see a decrease, they're getting rid of their fire records management software. Increase in medical control, a decrease in the ECG service. I don't remember what that is. Okay, so that's the warranty service on the hot monitors. I didn't have that down. You see the fifty thousand dollar decrease in the safety consultant. That's because when we got our investigative report last time, we weren't sure how quick we were going to be able to hire a chief or what was going to happen. But we were able to bring in Chief Oheva to transition into that full-time slot. When then we transitioned to Chief Notton, so we don't need it and we didn't use it. I don't think we used any of it, did we? No, I don't think so. Just making sure.
So that's added to the six hundred thousand?
That's exactly right. So I said, you're going to see little things along the way. Utilities, we had an increase, same exact reason as the police department. They're switching to the first net system. Travel and training, an increase of about twenty-five hundred dollars. What Chief Notton is trying to do is getting, is trying to get the officers in the fire department to officer training school. Some of them have never been. Memberships, dues and licenses, these are the strack fees. This is just a placeholder because if you remember, we've applied for a grant already for this. But we want to go ahead and put them in just in case. The fire capital items. A hundred thousand dollars for self-contained breathing apparatuses. That's actually eleven self-contained breathing apparatuses. Seventy thousand five for two ECG monitors, twenty-eight-five for mobile radios, twenty-nine thousand for two CPR devices. Twelve thousand five hundred for an eye plan table. That's that big tall table that you put your plans on, that you can read them. Thirteen thousand five hundred for two thermal imaging cameras. Eighteen thousand dollars for a fire department application server and ten thousand four hundred dollars for a fire department perimeter fence. And Chief Notton and I were just talking today about the IT security at the fire department, and we need to, that's one of the reasons we're asking for this server, or is the reason. Public Works expenditures. Look at that decrease in capital there, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. I'm sure you remember what that one was.
Street sweeper.
No, the Evers Road Bridge.
The Evers Road Bridge.
Yeah, exactly. So that's under Public Works. Street sweeper would have come out of Eminole.
Okay.
Contractual service, removed twenty-two thousand dollars from utilities because we over-budgeted last year, and we reduced the debris haul-off. And we'll dissect that one just a little bit. So under your Public Works, you see a ten thousand dollar increase in engineering services. They are cranking out the projects at Public Works. I was looking at the next agenda. They're busy. Thirteen thousand dollar decrease in debris haul-off. What we look at here was historical spending, number one, was not that much. And number two, we found a cheaper vendor. Then if you go down to the seventy-five hundred dollar reduction in the oil and gas disposal, we have fewer drop-offs, so we're not needing the services much. We got a new company that's also at a reduced price compared to the old company. You see a five thousand dollar decrease in the tree fungicide. That costs seventy, seven hundred and fifty dollars per treatment, per oak wilt. We have one kit at Public Works that we bought as a city that no one is using. On June the twenty-second, we actually had a free training class for residents so that they could learn how they could apply the fungicide to their trees for oak wilt issues.
How many residents showed up for that?
About forty.
Forty?
Forty residents.
And no one wanted to check out the kit after that?
It's a little more complicated, and it seemed like they, even after learning how to do it, they wanted a professional.
Yeah, I've been to, I've seen, it is, it's not easy trying to keep all those little things on the tree. Okay, thank you.
And then you see, they're just historical spending, a small decrease, I'm sorry, in telephones, a pretty large decrease in water and electricity. That's historical spending. Two thousand dollar decrease in travel and training, same reasons.
And are we, actually have something on the books, Melinda, for doing more trenching for oak wilt? I see that you've got it in the budget for FY twenty-twenty. The ten thousand was for Forest View, right? So I'm just wondering what.
Yes, ma'am. If the trench on Forest View doesn't work, then we're going to trench through the alley. We're going to do another attack.
Okay.
And we have to wait to see what happens.
Okay.
Thank you. Turn the mic on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turned it off.
Turned it off.
So capital items for public works, $30,000 for gas pump replacements, $40,000 for a half-ton pickup, $20,000 for sidewalks, you all do this every year, and $8,500 for a copier is their capital needs. So their, their capital needs are going down significantly because they have good equipment now, they have air conditioner tractor, that's pretty cool. I like it that they're working comfortably. Planning and zoning expenditures. So planning and zoning, just want to make sure, because this gets a little bit complicated, we have Xavier Antu and Christina Garcia both in there at 100%. We have Mr. Cox in there at 59% and then Anna in there at 100% now. And Brandon, Meland is actually in there only 50% and then 50% out of the enterprise fund. Engineering increased by about 10,000 here, actually, we can look on the next page. If you look at engineering services, same thing, they've done an increase of $10,000, same exact reason, they've got a lot of projects going on. About to give you good news on one project in the city manager's report. Barcom, they are actually, we've just, they're paying their portion of Barcom, we've split up Barcom between categories.
Excuse me, is there a summary of how much Barcom is charged per department that equals 100%?
We can get that for you, we can just go through these, add them up.
As we keep going through the budget, we see a little bit here and a little bit there.
That's exactly what you're seeing. That's right. My permit now has gone up to 5,000 and because that's, will be for a full year usage. The Tyler annual subscription, our INCODE, it has gone up to $2,200 and that's because we've put it on all four of their computers now. The rest of it is very nominal. Planning and zoning is asking for one capital item and that, they want the same thing the fire department wants, is an I-plan, I-plan table, so they can lay the plans out and look at them with the light under them and spread them out and have, you know, developers look at them with them or business owners or whoever, engineers. Okay, so economic development expenditures, this is the one that's truly its own, because that's what the Leon Valley voters voted to do, was set this one-eighth aside. I mean, it actually should say economic and community development expenditures. So out of your personnel services, we already just, I think we already went over this, but it's 25% city manager, 18% city attorney, 41% your business relations director and 25% for Madi Bill. When you look at the itemization of the ED-CD fund, we actually had $20,000 set aside for attorney's fees and we eliminated that this year because we were victorious at the Supreme Court in the Larry Little versus Leon, LV-EDC case. ED webpage in Leon Valley, that's 3,600 is proposed for that. Everything stays flat until you get down to advertising. Travel training goes up significantly and that is in the event that we decide to certify, continue the certification process for Mr. Cox. So if you decide you don't want to do that, then that would be cut back. Maintenance dues and licenses were reduced and then ED project funding got reduced as well. Although, this number is interesting because it's a lot higher, because we just got all of the, the 300 and however many thousand dollars we had set aside in case we needed to return it, is now sitting in that pot of money as well as we're getting our bond money back, which, do you remember, Ms. Frederick, what the amount of that is, 79 or something?
79,000.
79,000.
And, and where is that shown?
It's not shown here, but it's sitting in the account right now. This is just your budget for FY 2020, so you're not going to see anything that's left over. But I just want, I just, for transparency's sakes, I just want you to know it's a lot more than that.
Right, but we will, you will show it like on the monthly-
Almost 400,000 more than that.
Whenever we get it, you'll show it on the monthly report that this is how much we have.
Yes, ma'am, it does reflect it now. It's shown now and it's also shown to the ED-CD committee as well.
Okay.
This, just because this is the 2020 budget. Special event expenditures, if you look at the $22,000, that is overtime for special events, increased by about $2,000. I'm really kind of wondering if we need this after we read my city manager's report tonight because I really am impressed by the police department, they have so many reservists and in order to be a reservist in Leon Valley now, you have to work the Fourth of July. So general fund did not pay for any overtime out of the police department this time, for the first time. There was some paid for out of traffic safety funds, some officer, extra officers out there, but no overtime was paid for. So I'm not sure that we still need this increase, but it is in there.
How about public works?
Public works, there definitely is overtime.
That's in this number, okay.
Supplies, you see an increase in special events, you added $28,000 for the Soapbox Derby, actually, just go to the next page instead of me trying to remember. So there's $50,000 for the July 4th celebration, 22, 254 for overtime, 16, 2 for concerts, which is going to come nowhere near when you see Ms. Caldera's presentation next council meeting. $2,000 for the beautification committee, 2850 for Christmas tree lighting, 2,700 for Earthwise, 28,000 for the Soapbox Derby, 3,000 for the wedding expo. And if you remember, this was an idea from last year, but since we weren't able to redo the kitchen, we did not want to do that without that kitchen looking good and, and brand new. So once we get that done, we would still like to do the expo there. And then $2,000 for movies in the park. Parks expenditures, contractual went up significantly, I'll show you why in a little bit. Capital went down, although we're still buying lots of cool park stuff. There was a $100,000, nope, my numbers don't add up anymore, there's a $40,000 reduction in capital, this slide changed. Okay, go to the next slide.
Could you give an example of contractual services for 436, 760?
I can. Contractual services in parks is the tree removal, in fact, it's up there, the contract for the pools and pool repairs.
Oh, the pool, okay. Okay, I see it there, thank you.
So your pool contract, of course, will stay the same this year, go up a little bit. So, but it went from 50 to 101 because you, we're now doing two pools. Pool repairs, that's all forest oaks so far, but it did go down by $2,000 this year. And under your, oh, here we go, I was, I know I wrote notes about what pool repairs they were and I knew rerouting, but I didn't remember the rest of it. So what the forest oaks pool needs is rerouting in the pump, in the pump room and this year, we actually exceeded our budget in repairs and maintenance because of the forest oaks pool. We had to replace the skimmers and three lights. So we're in the deficit this year in that category. Utilities, water, electric, that goes up because of the forest oaks pool paying for the SAWs water there. Repairs and maintenance goes up by about $60,000 and that's in replacing the picnic tables at Raymond Rimkus Park and I was very confused why that was under repairs and maintenance and Melinda explained to me that the tables are not actually replaced, it's the insides of the tables. So you still keep the metal structure of the tables, but you replace the inside, the metal structures. Yeah, so that's why she put it under repairs and maintenance, I didn't know that.
And how many tables? That's, 80,000 seems a lot. Is it all the tables?
That's for, that's not just the tables, I'm telling you that it increased and that's one of the reasons for the increase, but repairs and maintenance, public works pays for a lot of repairs and maintenance out of their budget.
All the parks.
But I don't know how much they, all, exactly.
Okay.
And we have new parks, yes.
That's right.
I was going to add to your question.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Do you know how much for the tables? Because I don't remember.
There's like 23 picnic tables and all of them need replacing, they're in poor condition, so.
Okay, thank you.
So parks, this is kind of the fun part. Next slide, please. What they, what she's trying to do is $180,000 for shade structures at new parks, $20,000 for butterfly pavilion at the Raymond Rimkus Park, $15,000 for fitness equipment at Linkwood Trail and then $60,000 for the peach tree park. This is a placeholder, because we don't know what you all or the citizens are going to want to do with that little, that little piece of land, but we have that for discussion at the coffee and so we just didn't want to forget it. So we have a placeholder in there and I think you have a recommendation, a new recommendation from the parks committee, don't you? That's what I thought.
Okay, did we have 60,000 last year also in the budget?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought we did, yeah. So 60,000 plus another 60,000? Or did that just go back into the general fund?
What my plan is, is we do have 60,000 this year and so we could start, if we wanted the new concept, or the old concept, but whichever one you want to do, we would start in the next fiscal year, because there's no way we'd finish it this fiscal year. And so we just put another 60,000 in for next year. I have a rough estimate of about 120,000, probably a little bit more, because one of the items on one of those concepts is the splash pad, a little one. So that's alone going to be, you know, quite expensive, probably 30,000 for it.
Melinda, last year, you showed 20,000, that's why we both said no.
We did a budget adjustment or something.
Okay, all right. It's not on here, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. I'm really excited for those shade structures, they're so needed. And this budget has been run by the, the park commission as well. Library expenditures, same reason in personnel costs, you see an increase in supplies and that's because we slowly increased the supplies line items, the supply line item, so that we can put books under supplies instead of under capital where they were coming from. So this will be the first year that there's nothing in capital for the library, because they were, they put, the first year I got here, there's 20,000 in books. And so we've just been slowly weaning them off of that and, and moving it to where it's supposed to be in the supply category. So they should have zero there this year. Under library, there's not a whole lot to tell there. I don't know if you have any questions, they're very small. The panic button is eliminated because it's already got installed. Computer backup was reduced, there's just not a lot of library story to tell.
Okay, the contractual services are what?
Zero, because they were asking for contractual services, they were asking for books and so every year, we've reduced that by 5,000.
But it says 40,476, so I was just wondering what that represented, 40, the, the page before that.
Oh, if you look at the next page, it adds up.
Oh, it does.
Uh-huh, right, see the bottom, 4476.
Okay, I don't know why I keep forgetting to go to the next page.
That's okay, I thought she was already on it.
I'm sorry. I was still on that first page. So that's all of the contractual services, including the utilities and water and everything.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
It should end up to 4476.
I always think of contractual services like, you know, the engineer or, you know, like-
Actually, in, in my old job, we separated contractual services and then we called this something different.
Right, so that's why I didn't think utilities and all that was contractual, but anyway, all right, thank you.
But you, you see, she totals up contractual for you and then she adds it down here as the different expenses.
I see that.
Just, I'm used to having a header up there. Okay, so that concludes the general fund. If we go to the enterprise fund now and we do a quick overview, that budget is balanced as well. You have revenues of 4.6 million and operating expenses of 4.259 million, capital of 600,000. If you look at the revenues, that's almost a $200,000 increase over last year. The operating expenses are about a $100,000 increase over last year and capital is about $345,000 decrease from the previous year. The next slide, Mayor Riley actually asked for, and then we, what we do, if you all want to do a second reading, we'll toss a lot of these slides away. Right now, they're just information purposes, but this is, you operate the enterprise fund like a business, so you're selling a product. The product that you're selling is water. It's the only business I know where you don't, you hope you don't sell more, you actually hope you sell less, that people are conserving. But this shows you, from 2018 to 2019, we actually sold less water, at least projected right now, to the residential community, but we sold a little bit more to the commercial community. And then what we do is we just carry the projections over to 2020. The budget summary, for the enterprise fund, you're going to see the second green tab in your book, that's the enterprise fund. And if you look, you can see the revenues in there and your water rights reserve will equal resources of 4.708 million and your expenses total 4.96 million. We actually have a net decrease of 256,000. That estimate on the bottom, the ending fund balance, as, as I've said repeatedly now, I've learned now through the years that that's always higher next year than what we're actually giving you right now. And I haven't, I haven't said, I don't think I said that the first year or two, I think I did last year, until I just see that trend and it just feels more transparent to say it. Water and sewer operating revenue, other is connection fees, customer fees, tapping fees for water, tapping fees for sewer, those fees have increased by about 80,600. There's an increase in water and sewer sales that is projected and a small increase in stormwater fees that's projected. General admin expenses on that side, the contractual services, you see increase by 9,900, that's their portion of Barcom for 12 months. So that's the enterprise side of Barcom. You should only see that in one place. And then if you dissect it, you will see small increase for their portion of the audit, small increase for the INCODE billing software, a increase in Barcom, like I told you earlier, that's their portion, goes to 41,924. And revise, they'll actually pay half of that website cost. So the general fund will pay half and they'll pay half. Water expenditures dissected, you will see 33,000 increase in personnel services and if you notice, in contractual services, you saw a reduction from 811 to 526. That is the CDBG grant that we were able to get for blacksmith and wagon wheel. Capital goes from 515 to 600,000 in water, so an 85,000 increase and that, we'll dissect that in a little bit. Not a lot to tell on this slide either, for the new counselors, the EAA program, that's the Edwards Aquifer Authority, that is required by law, it's per habitat preservation. The SAWs interconnect, that is passed through, whatever SAWs bills us, that's what you see there. The water lease payment has been reduced by 38,550. Blacksmith and wagon wheel, so that was a reduction I told you about on the first page because we got the CDBG funds. And then advertising is going up by 2,400. Capital items, 140,000 to purchase water rights, 400,000 for rehab of the elevated storage tank, that's a big one, and then 60,000 for a mid-sized dump truck. The elevated storage tank is the one over there by John Marshall, in case you're wondering. Sewer expenditures, contractual services, reduction of 194,410, we'll talk about that in a little bit, and a reduction in capital of 198,400. So we have a total expenditure reduction of close to 400,000 in there. You dissect it, they reduce their engineering services to nothing. The SAW sewer connect stayed the same. The sewer video, where they send a little video down to find where the problem is, they've got that in there for 25,000. Neo post, which is their postage, they've got it in there for 17,040 and then the reduction on the blacksmith and wagon wheel repairs of 249, so that's why you end up in the negative under contractual. So that's why you end up in the negative under contractual. Advertising, they didn't use it. We eliminated it. Repairs and maintenance external, they overexpended in that category, so they have an increase of $30,000. And you do $150,000 replacement for sewer mains every year. Stormwater expenditures. We'll dissect capital on the next page. Supply decrease of 5,000, small increase in personnel services and a reduction in contractual. So when you look at contractual. We have a $24,000 elimination in street sweeping. And that's because you all bought that street sweeper last year, so we don't hire out a service for that anymore. $50,000 she has added in for the ridge detention pond reshaping. And my understanding is we need to close off the fence, the inlets and the outfalls or outfills, what are they called? I don't remember the name.
So we're going to remove the fence at the detention pond and create a step system inside. The new thinking that's going around is saying, if you get a child down in the bottom and some flood accidentally happens, they can't climb out of it. In addition to that, the outfall drains are, they have huge grates on them. And what happens if water pressure gets up against there, they get actually like stuck to it. And so we're going to redo those drains and then make a step up, shape it right, and then we can take the fence off and it won't look so ugly.
Okay, and that's all in-house?
No, ma'am.
We're going to contract, contract, okay. And who do we have in personal services on the stormwater? Do we have, do you? Yeah, I mean.
We can tell you.
Oh, is it a lot? I mean, I mean.
Percentages.
Oh, it's another one of those percentages. Okay. 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 Because we get, we pay a fee for the size of your lot, right? Business and home for stormwater. So you have a, that's how we generate the money. Okay.
So we have the person being agent, myself, the assistant, crime director, Crystal and Kelly at 5%. We have public works director David, Yvonne.
Excuse me, Vicki, can you use your mic, please?
We have Rhonda, myself, Ashley, Crystal and the manager at 5%. Then we have the public works director, the assistant public work director and Yvonne. And then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 10 positions at 10%. And then we have the guys that are actually in the park that do the mowing, two of those in there at 15%. Because they mow.
How many for mowing?
Pardon?
How many for mowing?
Two.
Two. And they're 15%.
At 15%, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Wow. Okay. Didn't realize that. Thank you.
So the $24,000 eliminated because of you gave, you approved a street sweeper last year. The $50,000, Melinda explained, I thought we were closing it off for safety, so I'm definitely glad she stepped up. But it's all safety related for the detention pond. Community center fund. That budget is balanced. Operating revenues of $160,000 and expenditures of 185. Your revenues went up about $4,000 from last year. That's mostly from hotel taxes. They were pretty flat as far as rentals. Operating expenditures went up about $40,000 from last year. Under capital, you see a $55,244 request. You see $42,000 for the community center kitchen remodel. This is one of them I told you about, Mayor. We went ahead and put a place saver in here, but we have applied for a CDBG grant for this.
That's what I thought. Okay.
$13,244 to replace the air conditioning units at the conference center. We replaced the air conditioning, air conditioning units last year at the community center, but we need to replace them at the conference center now. So when you dissect the community center budget summary, you can see the total revenues between hotel and rental fees are about $160,000 with total resources available of $240,000. And that's because you began the fund balance with an $80,000 balance. And then expenditures, total expenditures of $240,252 with a no-ending fund balance. That is, that one is cutting it close. There's really not a lot to tell on this page. The electricity went down $1,000, so go team, that was good. I think it went down the year before by $1,000 as well, or a little bit. Repairs and maintenance gone up by $2,300. There's not a lot to tell there. Crime control and prevention district, that's going to be your fourth green tab. When you have your actual crime control board meeting, Chief Salvaggio will be presenting and doing this budget. Crime control and prevention budget overview, you have operating revenues of $309,000. That's an increase of $9,000. And that's because if you look at the 2.5% sales tax increase and you apply it to that, that's how we came up with the $9,000 increase in revenues. Operating expenditures of $380,000 and we'll show you why in a little bit. The fund, currently, this program funds the assistant police chief, one patrol officer and one investigation sergeant. So if you look at the next page, you see your revenues, you see your resources available and your expenditures. And do you see at the bottom in your ending fund balance how we continue to go down? We're continuing to take from that fund balance. So eventually, if you go back to the previous screen, eventually you'll probably have to drop one of those positions. Or like you could assist the, you could replace the assistant police chief with another patrol officer or something like that. But eventually, that's going to catch up to us. But we did have a fund balance to deplete it and use, and so there's nothing wrong right now. I just want to point that out so that in the future, you know, we may have to eventually fix this. Street maintenance tax fund. Sales tax is budgeted higher, so it goes from 598 to 650. That's the 2.5% that I told you at the beginning of this presentation in sales tax. Sales tax, you actually see your FY '18 actual up there. Special revenue funds. Law enforcement standards and education, law enforcement training funds. 3162 is what we anticipate. Building security funds, we anticipate at just over $8,000. The child safety fund, which is what funds the school crossing guards. We're anticipating it at 7.6. Municipal court technology at $39,000. And in order to pay all of our debt for FY '20, we are projecting that will cost us $741,105. Special revenue funds, police forfeiture in the amount of 521,204. And then we're asking for two capital items out of those forfeiture funds. This will be.
Excuse me, Kelly. Are there any police officers that are paid out of forfeiture funds?
There are. And that's in the tab.
I believe it's two. Is it two? Okay. Thank you.
It's two. Yes.
Thank you.
So what you see here is what it would cost to do a 2% merit increase or a 2% cost of living adjustment. And so in personnel, that's what the increased numbers that you see are. 2% merit if the employee qualifies and a 2% cost of living. And what we have down here is a cost of living at 2% and it's split up by fund and that would cost you $206,000. If you go to the next page, we always make certain that we show you the CPI. The CPI comes in at 2.28 as of May. And we are looking at 2%. So we always historically have gone a little bit lower than the CPI. I think that it's important to keep up with the CPI because you do what we've done in the past. We end up below market and have to run in like you all have done and caught, try to catch up with everybody. And you all are at that point where if we keep adjusting it accordingly, we'll, we'll have to look next year. Every two years, we need to look at salaries and market. But you're not, it's not going to be such huge increases like we had to do the first couple of years. You had to make, you know, you had to make that decision and you made it so that the, that the pay was competitive. But in order for it to stay competitive, we need to keep up with the CPI.
Counselor Alcasir has a question.
On the merit, I always wondered how many qualified and how many didn't.
The majority of people qualify for merit. There's a few that don't. The majority do.
Okay.
Thank you. So in order to qualify for the merit, you just, you just have to be a meet expectations employees. You don't have to be an exceed, you don't have to be above, you just have to be a meets. And I think I've mentioned to you in the past, that's something I personally like to change. Haven't done it this year, but I would like to change it. And that is, I would like the merit increase to be based on performance. A performance-based merit increase, so it would go anywhere from like 4% to 0% depending on performance. Because you've been paying per performance versus the average employee gets the 2% and the exceeds expectations employee gets the 2% as well. Or you get yourself in trouble by doing this if directors are not trained properly and we're not, you don't have somebody constantly looking at the staff evaluations because I might see the glass as half-full and Vicki might see it for her employees as half-empty. And so our numbers might be different. So you have to be very careful when you do that, that all directors or anybody involved with performance evaluations, that we're all being consistent.
Where I used to work, a manager, we had something similar to that. And the manager said, okay, this is your year, you're going to get the 4% and you're going to get the 2% and you're going to get the 1%. So, and rotated every year.
Oh, wow. Well, so that's the same thing as we're doing now. Everybody gets two. There's no meaning behind it. I would like them to be meaningful performance evaluations. That's what it should be. Then, we actually were proposing, the one area that we're still behind is on longevity. We got caught up, so happy. Last year, we got caught up on, we are now competitive with the other cities on retirement. We've increased it to where the employee pays more and the city pays, pays more. But we have as good of retirement, not as, as the city of San Antonio, but as any other suburban city now. So what we've looked at is longevity. And our proposal was to go from $4 to $8 a month. But we really liked, I think it was Counselor Alcasir's suggestion, wasn't it? Or Counselor Bradshaw? Who suggested the step? Oh, you guys were together?
We discussed it.
Okay, I can remember, I can remember which one.
Yeah, we both discussed it, but it was Counselor Alcasir's suggestion.
Okay. So this, this is a council suggested option and it's a tiered system. So you actually are paid for longevity by the amount of years that you've been here. So if you go to the next page, this is what I really wanted to know. If you take staff's original suggestion, it costs you about $50,300. If you take council's suggestion, it costs you about $3,000 more. But if you go to the previous screen, but you award the employees who stay here for longer. So I really liked the suggestion. I just didn't know what it was going to look like on paper. And it doesn't look much different on paper.
Looks good.
It does look good. Yeah. Yeah, I do too. It's just one more incentive, anything you can do to stay competitive. Okay, personnel. Longevity, back one, please. No, one back one. Oh.
Oh, yeah, we already did that.
I lied, we did that already.
$3,000.
Sorry. There is just, Ashley or Crystal, one always does this for us. I think this was Ashley. This was longevity pay by city. And right now, there's some that are better than us and there's some that are worse than us. The ones that are worse than us are Von Army, Chavano Park, but Chavano Park's pay is better than ours. Almost, Almost Park is worse than us. Windcrest is worse and Alamo Heights is worse, but Alamo Heights pay is better. So there's three, I would say, that probably are worse than us. Von Army, Almost Park and Universal and Windcrest. And Universal City, actually. So we're kind of right in the middle. That's not actually what I expected to see. I actually expected us to see in the lower brackets like we were with retirement. We weren't. So I was really, I was happy with that. Personnel, as we present this budget, we have not received the final cost for the city's health insurance program. But as I told you earlier, we budgeted a 17% increase in the proposed budget. Once we receive the final numbers, we will actually come back to you for approval on that. And I think Crystal believes this year, she's actually going to get those numbers in July. Personnel, the proposed budget includes funding for the medical insurance program, which provides medical, dental, vision, life and insurance. The program provides medical insurance to employees at no cost. Dependent insurance is, will provide it, but the employee has to pay for it. And it funds the retirement at 17.32% effective January 1st, 2020, which is an increase of .25%. And so that's just keeping up with TMRS. So we talked about holidays. I didn't even know Battle of the Flowers was a holiday until a group of city managers texted me asking me if I wanted to go golfing. I'm like, why are you guys golfing? And they said, well, it's our holiday. It's not yours? And I said, no, I don't know anything about this holiday. So we just thought we'd bring it up. There is, for consideration, and I don't think any staff has strong feelings about it one way or the other, but some cities are off for Columbus Day, about half, I think. And then more cities are off for Battle of the Flowers Parade Day, which is observed the 4th Friday in April. So if you look at the next page, we did a survey for you there as well. We have seven cities, suburban cities that are closed for Battle of the Flowers Day and three that are open. Three closed for Columbus Day and seven that are open. My only thought about Battle of the Flowers Day is you have a, pretty much a skeleton staff here on Friday anyway. So that's really up to you, however you decide. Just remember that that's not necessarily.
Ms. Alcasir?
Most people are off on Friday.
Yeah, we're in Northside and they're always off.
The school district?
Okay. Conform with it.
Is there any consideration for 4th of July holiday?
We, we worked a 17-hour day this year. So I don't think that's going to happen in Leon Valley.
The day after then.
Oh, what we do is, we will. Yeah, we, yeah, we, you were there with us.
I know.
We were there at 7:30 in the morning cleaning up. And so we can't take off the day after either. But what we always do is we give an administrative day, so staff gets a 10-hour day for that work. I mean, it doesn't equal out, but they get a day to take off for the 4th of July in the, in the following week or the week after, whatever. Yeah, thank you. That's right. Any hourly employees that work get double time because it's a holiday. So it's just the exempt employees that you see so much of. And we use us because we don't get any overtime. And so it's cheaper to use us and have us running around. But, you know, of course, we need, Public Works really bad there and they did a great job this year. Christmas holidays, the city is closed. This is the proposed December 23rd to January 1st. And this would mean that you would designate the Christmas holiday as Christmas Eve, Christmas and the day after. And the New Year's holiday is January 1st. We would reopen on January 2nd. This would require us to use three days of personal leave during this time. And it's really nice because it knocks that leave off the books and knocks the liability to the city. You know, reduces the liability to the city. So that's the proposal for the Christmas break. If you all want a second budget workshop, we have it scheduled for July 16th at 5:30. If not, then we would do the second read, which you could answer, we could answer questions there as well on August 6th. August 6th is also the crime control and prevention district budget, public hearing and adoption. And then the formal adoption would be on August 6th.
Okay, yes, Counselor.
August 6th is, we have to have the budget hearing anyway.
That's correct. You have to have it anyway.
I don't think we need it next week.
We can make the August 6th the second read, is that what you're saying?
Because we have, exactly.
That amenable to everybody? Okay, and then also, any other thoughts other than Counselor Alcasir about the extra holiday?
I'd like to see, like Martin Luther King in January, what other cities do and I don't, and.
We already get that one off.
Do, is that already?
Hit it off. You just want to know what other cities do, right?
Yes, and what they do in the.
Most cities have Martin Luther and the state has it off as well.
Okay. And the president's in February. Do we have it off?
We do, and I don't know what other cities do for that.
Yeah.
I think most of them are closed. But I, but we can find out and I'll get you that answer. Could you put that in email to me? So, I do that as well. Thank you.
Well, just looking at the survey, I mean, Fiesta is just, I mean revered, you know? I mean, that just, people love to go to the parade. So, you know, if we looked at, at both of them, I would say, you know, Fiesta off versus keeping Columbus Day. I don't, because again, most, everybody's open on that day.
Right.
Y'all have any other?
That's what the number showed.
Yeah. So, I agree with that. Thanks. Okay, very good. All right.
Okay, do I have any input or any, anything else that you would like to discuss as a council that you? Oh, and then the rest of it, I'm sorry. Is the hearings on the proposed tax rate September 3rd? September 10th is your second one. Formal adoption, September 7th.
Okay, I just, yeah, that's us, just our. So, we have an extra meeting in September because of the budget.
That's exactly right. It, the tax rate, it's quick.
When will we get the effective tax rate number, Vicky and the?
I should have it, they're saying probably July 24th. And then, the tax assessor collector has to do the calculation on it. But by the time I get to the 6th, I should have it.
So, that.
I don't anticipate a problem.
Okay.
With what we've put in there.
That .54 rate that we have in there, you don't know if that's going to equal the effective tax rate like it, like we did last year?
I do, I won't know until.
We won't know.
Right, they do the calculation. So, if it is, if, if for some reason we adopt and it is the effective tax rate, then all that goes away. And we'll adopt everything on the 6th.
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
If we do exceed the effective, because we will not be exceeding the rollback rate. Then, we'll have to have those.
So, now, is the rollback rate going to be 3.5%?
Not until next year.
Not until next year. So, it's still 8% this year?
That's right.
Okay.
Doesn't start until 2020.
So, we don't have to worry about the 3.5% this year?
And at your numbers now, you don't have to worry. You'd still be, you're still going to be fine.
Okay. All right, I think that was all my questions. Oh, I've just been hearing about, you know, all these hacks, like we just got hacked last week. Do we have insurance for hacking? I've, I've just been reading.
We have cybersecurity insurance through TML.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
I've just been reading and hearing on the, you know, whatever, that more and more people are paying for insurance because of the hacking.
Chief Salvaggio just sent a horrific article that I won't let Sondra read because she won't sleep tonight about another city who got hacked, who lost like 100 years' worth of documents. Their city secretary said, "Everything that I've done is gone."
Oh, no. So, sorry.
Yeah, and it's really sad. It is. And they're, that city's going through a lot right now.
Even with the backup system? Really?
Took everything.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Well, that's because they didn't have the proper procedures set up with their managed services company. What they're doing is if, if you back up your data, a lot of the cities, especially the one in Florida, they backed up their server locally. So, and that, their local backup was online. So, when hackers got in, they hacked the, the actual server and then they went in and hacked up the backup. So, if you were to do an offline backup to the cloud someplace, then you're, you have data that's secure. And if you did have a hack, the, the managed service company can restore you in a matter of minutes. Instead like Florida, they paid $600,000 to get their data back. Yeah, this eliminates that.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
And so, in this budget, you saw the server being proposed in there. That's, we have an online server backup. We have a cloud backup. We're proposing an offline server backup.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions?
And I think all I said was a new server, so I probably should have been more thorough in that.
I was just wondering.
I'm glad that came up.
All right, any, any other questions from the counselors? Okay, any questions from our residents or guests this afternoon? Okay, just wanted to be sure. We will then, as the consensus of the, of the board, to have our second read on August 6th. All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Counselor, for your presentation.
Thank you.
For all of the support in putting these documents together. All right, then moving at 7:20 to the city managers' report. Ms. Counselor, if you'll continue, please.
Yes, good evening, one more time. Another milestone accomplished. The BOA meetings are now livestreamed. So, the next time they have a BOA meeting, they'll be live. Without any objective, objection, Sandra is going to go ahead and post for the July 17th. Oh, that's, this is, that's right. Sandra's going to go ahead and post for the July 17th, 312 hearing because we got a notice that Attorney Ryan Henry's not available on the 16th. So, unless this council objects.
The 16th is our, yeah, he's not available on the 17th.
Oh, I have my dates wrong.
The 16th is our council meeting.
Okay, so the 16th is a council meeting. So, we would post for the 312 hearing on July 18th because we don't have an attorney on July 17th.
We had set aside two days, but we're just going to do the one day and then see what goes.
I'm asking you for a consensus on what you want to do. We could do the 18th and 19th. We could do the 18th and then something the following week. But the 17th, Mr. Henry sent a notice to you and me that he was not going to be available. Or he was concerned that if he was, he was in a jury and they end up deliberating, that he might miss that evening of the 17th.
Okay.
The 8th?
I think the 18th.
17th, okay.
Right, because he's not here on the 17th. So, just post for the 18th.
Just post for the 18th and see what happens at 5:30?
I think so. What do y'all think?
Is that the consensus?
Mine is 18th and 19th.
18th and 19th, it would be okay.
Okay, so do the 18th posting, which carries it over to the 19th if we need to.
That, that's a Friday again, right? That's a Friday. And then, we've got Saturday. We've got Saturday coffee with the mayor. I don't know.
Exactly. It's going to be a crazy week.
Yeah, I just, I think that's, it's a heavy schedule, but it's up to the council.
Just let us know how to post because we already have the language. We just need to know how you all want it posted.
I don't know. I mean, could we do, could we do the Monday just to give us, you know, the 18th and the, is it the 20th, 21st, 22nd? And then, the 20th for the coffee, just to, I don't know. Fridays are.
I'll go with Counselor Martinez's suggestion, the 18th and 19th.
Okay, Counselor Martinez, that's what you prefer?
I prefer nothing, but I would accept that.
Okay, okay, so now you have direction, Sandra. I will be away for a week or two while my daughter has her first child. However, I'm still going to be available to staff for questions during my entire absence. And Crystal will be reporting to me on a daily basis any updates that I need to know. So, feel free to, I would actually prefer, if you would, if you have any questions, go through Crystal first. And, but she will be in touch with me every day. And if there's something that she needs assistance with, she will be calling me. Wanted to advise you that the planning and zoning would like to have your consideration to remove item 8.1 from the agenda this evening.
I agree.
Did you want to know their reasons?
Go ahead and give us the reasons, please.
They're, they're wanting additional time to gather further research on the rain barrels. They want to distinguish and, and limit our ordinance on, to rain barrels. Or do we want to include them to the entire rain harvesting, harvesting system? They don't feel like they've properly addressed that. They would like the opportunity to reach out to citizens in the neighborhood, engage their opinions on what practices are working and what systems are working. And so, they just felt like, and maybe what systems citizens already have in place, that we were a little bit premature with this. And what we were doing honestly was just throwing it on the agenda because we were following the plumbing code. But I think that it really needs a little more depth. And I know a lot of people in Leon Valley enjoy the idea of rain barrels. Therefore, we want to be able to not only educate the community about what our findings are, but get more input from the community. Because it's not something that has to be done tonight.
As I reviewed the packet, I was wondering, was it just the citizens who are on the Leon Valley Water Company that would be eligible for the $40 rebate?
That is correct.
That's correct.
That is right.
But anybody in the city, including the Saws customers.
Would have to adhere.
Can, can still put a rain barrel, right, in?
They would, they could put a rain barrel, but if you read that ordinance, there's restrictions on the rain barrel. And so, that's why Mr. Antu would really like to see what's out there, see what people have and see if there's, doesn't need to be a little more customization to this ordinance. So, that we just make, ensure that, you know, we know what's here and we know what people want. And the only thing that we will have to do is comply with the plumbing code.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Is, is everybody amenable to?
Any objections to removing 8.1? Yeah, I just would like to be sure that we distinguish between Leon Valley Water customers and Saws customers.
Okay.
So that we.
So noted.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just think, I'm on Saws. That's why I wanted to know. And I'd like to have a rain barrel.
I don't think there, there is going to be a distinction.
Okay.
There shouldn't be a distinction in this ordinance at all.
Okay, but I won't get the $40.
It will be for everybody.
But I won't get the $40 credit, right?
It's right. That's the only distinction right there.
That's the only distinction. Okay, yes, sir.
Does, does Saws not have a rainwater rebate?
Well, they, you know, I have to look, look it up. They have a rebate program and I just have to look it up. But yeah, I knew, so, but that's a good, good point. I'll try to look it up for the next time. Okay.
I have some good news. We have received approval from the utility companies, finally, all utility companies for the Grass Hill Plat. That's taken a long time, a lot of work. The plat is ready to go to the planning and zoning and then council for approval for recording that plat. That's taken, how long? A long time. I'm sorry, but it has. But we literally got this news today. So, I was happy about that. The other thing I want to bring before you is we did hear from Todd Putnam, who's with Bear County. We've been working, we've been visiting with the contractor about the repairs along El Verde Road. He stated that we have been, there's been negotiations back and forth for some time now, that we have gotten them to agree to perform all of the mill and overlay for, for El Verde Road. Because originally, they were just going to repair the patches of where their vehicles turned in or out. So, we got that done. But what he can't do, and I understand this, is Bear County can't do that water main. And they can't do the concrete in front of the fire station. Because if they do the mill and overlay in front of the fire station, those big old weighted trucks will immediately destroy that. So, I forgot how many feet deep of concrete is. It's like 12 feet or something? I forgot. How many feet is it? Yeah, 12 feet. You have to go down of concrete so that when the fire trucks turn. And so, they, I mean, they will not pay for that as well.
So, do we have that budgeted?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said feet, didn't I? Yeah, 12 inches.
Yeah, so do we have that cost?
We have to go.
Those cost of those two items, the concrete and the water main, in next year's budget?
Well, so that's what I'm going to talk to you about.
Oh, okay.
So, he's going to have to go to Commissioner's Court for approval of the, all of the mill and overlay. He states that he doesn't have enough time, or he doesn't think he could get approval for anything else. The good news, though, is that he is willing to pay for all the roadwork and we're not out that money. We can come in later to replace the water main, which I think one resident in particular is not going to like. But Melinda's going to speak to LNV about whether or not we can just abandon that water main that's already in place and then put a new one in our right-of-way. So, we don't have to tear out that water main that's underneath the street, abandon it completely, plug it up and put a brand-new one in. That would be our expense. That would be in the bar ditch instead of the street. But we wouldn't have, there would be no cuts on the road surface whatsoever, ever, because it would be in our right-of-way. This part would have to be bid out, just like the concrete at the fire station would have to be bid out. We have money in the, where's Melinda? Ouch.
She's gone.
She has money in water and sewer for the water line. The concrete, I don't know about that. And I don't know what that would cost. But we got them to pay for a substantial part of it.
Yeah. I mean.
And that was not clear on your ILA that, that you had signed with Bear County. So, we have, Melinda and I have been working on this for months now.
Well, I don't, one of the agendas, number 8.2, we had some money left over. That was in the water fund. Could that be applied here?
You know, I want to say, but I'm scared to say it. I want to say that she said she has money for both. I just know she has money for the water line.
Okay.
So, let me wait until I ask her to make sure, because I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
Okay, Counselor Alcasir and then Counselor Martinez.
Separate issue. It's been brought to my attention that the sewer line they're replacing to connect up to Leon Valley might not be adequate. And I wondered if maybe Melinda or David could check on that.
They, Mayor Counselor Alcasir, they certainly can, but that is, I've not received that opinion from the contractor, from Bear County or from Public Works so far.
From a couple of citizens.
Okay, do you know anything about that, Mr. Dimmeline?
I haven't heard about that, but we.
Haven't either.
They have, they're connecting, and Melinda's familiar with it. I just want, would like the size of the sewer line that they're putting in to be checked. That's in the creek itself.
Mr. Dimmeline, can you get that information to Counselor Alcasir and CC me, please? Thank you.
Is that current work that you, that they're seeing in the?
Yeah, they're, yes, because they have to, they, what reminded me was her saying abandoning the water on there. They're abandoning the old sewer and replacing it. But replacing it with a much smaller sewer.
Really? I thought it was double.
That's a concern.
I thought it was 24 to 48 inches.
On our side.
Not on your side?
Yeah, on our side.
We will get that information to you because I've been to quite a few meetings. I've not heard anything about that. The concern has always been that water line. So, we will get you the information because I don't know it right now. I want to thank our fire and our police department for being so proactive after the 4th of July event. They got together, put two, two teams together and they found six violations where people were popping fireworks in the city where they weren't supposed to be. They went out, talked to residents, asked them to please stop. The residents did. No citations issued. And it stopped. But there was only six violations, which I was really happy with. I mean, they were out on the streets. I also want to compliment the police department in what I told you earlier about. I couldn't believe how many reserve officers I saw at the 4th of July event when I learned that Chief Salvaggio has made that mandatory so that nothing comes out of general fund. I was really excited about that. But again, we did bring in a couple of extra patrol officers out of traffic safety funds. I want to.
Excuse me, I forgot, Mr. Martinez.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He wanted to say something after Ms. Alcasir, so thank you.
With El Verde, when they do the mill and overlay, is any plan for sidewalks on either side or curbs?
No. Mayor Counselor Martinez, no plans for sidewalks and I do not believe the residents want sidewalks.
Okay. And you just mentioned the 4th of July. I kind of, in fact, my wife mentioned it. The way they put the barricades down Pass Road, so they made a sidewalk so we could leave, come out of the big parking lot and drive down Pass to get to Bandera. And pedestrians had a safe sidewalk. I really, that was really nice.
It was really nice and it also saved a baby fawn. We were able to get a baby fawn back into its mother. It was out there on the sidewalk and a couple of citizens helped me and we literally got that fawn back in the natural area. It was helpful, I agree. But I also, I don't think she's here. But three weeks before the 4th of July, Marty Bell Mendoza's fiancee is a police officer and in order to avoid being hit by an oncoming car, had to jump off a bridge, had to jump like 40, 40 feet. He was 20 feet. He was the one. Broken bones everywhere. She's has to take, sit home and take care of him. So, I jumped to Ashley, who'd been her co-chair and said, "Tag, you're it." Ashley did a phenomenal job. There was a couple of hiccups and one I want to personally apologize to you for because I should have caught it. Ashley handed out tags to the council and I didn't click that she didn't hand out instructions to the council. So, my apologies for that. I know, I, I feel really bad about that, but that's on me because she didn't, she didn't realize that from last year. She did a phenomenal job having that for three weeks and I'm really, really proud of the work that she did. And then, I have to say, all directors did their part. It's a long day. It's a hard day. But Crystal and Sandra, anytime, they were right there to back her up. Anytime she panicked and needed something and realized that something was missing, they were on it and were doing it. And so, it was, it was quite the team effort. But I'm really impressed with Ashley's small amount of experience, what she was able to do that day.
She's right there. Thank you, Ashley. Always had a smile on her face.
She does. So, lots of appreciation to staff, lots of appreciation to Ashley. So far, I have had nothing but positive emails, texts and a private next-door message and two public next-door messages about the event. And then we had one neighbor who's upset about the band. Um, two years ago, Sandra, when she, um, actually was running the Fourth of July festival, proposed that the band go till ten-thirty, so we just carried that forward, but, um, we got rained out. And so this year, we carried the band forward, and traffic-wise, the officers loved it. Because people exited in two phases, instead of that mass exodus. But there is one neighbor who did not appreciate the music going, uh, he was used to it going till ten, and it went till ten-thirty. Uh, I tried to explain that, you know, we've posted it everywhere, cause he said he didn't know. Um, and it's been posted everywhere, and I think with his last response to me, I, he wasn't happy, but I think he understood, um, that it was posted at least. So that's the only complaint that I've received so far, other than me complaining to myself, I was, oh my gosh, why didn't I tell Ashley to give the council their instructions? I can't believe, I forgot that.
Well, maybe we could just shift it, you know, because I, I, I really do feel that the ten, that was a loud band. It really was pretty loud, and so I, I understand the citizens' complaint with boom, 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 you know?
From ten to ten-thirty.
Yeah, so I mean, if we just shifted it, still did the band playing thirty, but, you know, maybe starting, cause really, it gets darker.
Just turn down the speakers.
Just turn it down just a little bit.
Well, maybe we could do that, but it was pretty loud.
But the band was excellent.
There was, they were excellent, and, and a lot, and it was really interesting, because it, it, you know, the police wanted to use it as a traffic calming measure. We had had a pedestrian hit that year, and they, we didn't get to try it out last year, because we got rained out. So we got to try it out this year, and everybody loves it. Um, and so whether you turn the music down, or you start the fireworks earlier and in the same, either way, that's gonna need some minor tuning and adjustment. Um, but like I said, literally, there was only one resident that complained, I had several, um, say they love it, so, you know.
It pleased everybody.
Can't please everybody.
What was your anticipated attendance?
We don't have that yet.
Uh, just a guesstimate?
Uh, twenty thousand is what we talked about, but we don't know. We were up in the, um, we went up in the fire ladder thing and took pictures, um, and so we'll need to get those analyzed.
Twenty K and, uh, and one complaint?
There was a lot of people there when you-
That's like a point oh 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 one percent.
A twenty K and what?
And one, one complaint.
Oh, I know, and it's, and it's an individual that, that complains a lot. Um, and so, and, and he sent the complaint to both Mayor Riley and, and me, um, and so, you know, that, that's your decision. But I did, you know, as I bring you the compliments, I also want to make sure you understand that there was one complaint.
Um, I just, I had some people, since we're on the Fourth of July, if we wanna give our, I think this might be appropriate, is that, can we do that?
Absolutely.
Um, some, I had a couple of people that showed up to the parade at ten AM, because that's what they were used to, uh, in the past. And I said, "Well, you know, I believe," and I, I did, I looked at, um, the Lion's Roar and the E-News, and it, it said it. But you know that little postcard that we sent about all of the do's and don'ts, you know, as far as-
The plastic bag thing?
And the pla, yeah, it didn't have anything on there about the start time of the parade.
Of the parade, okay.
And didn't have anything about the start time for the five o'clock festival, so maybe we could add that to the front of it.
Put that down if somebody will, cause we're actually doing a scrubbing tomorrow morning, at nine o'clock in the morning to say, so this is really helpful to us to bring tomorrow to the team.
That's what I heard there, and then, um, I also had somebody that was a participant in the parade who said, "Why can't the Leon Valley organizations be put at the front of the parade instead of the back of the parade?" And I said, "Well, I'll just pass that on." I don't know how, I don't know how they did the lineup, but-
By whoever comes first.
Yeah, so, okay. And then, um, did y'all think that the parade, uh, participation was a little bit less? Um, I thought it was a little bit lighter, and, and this person also agreed that it was a little, he actually said, "Do you think it was a little bit lighter from-"
Crystal's saying she thinks it was lighter too, and she thinks it was because of the Soapbox Derby. I, I, you know, I was right there in the middle with all the people, because you're, the, uh, MC quit the night before, so I had to take over. Um, but, uh, so I saw a lot of people, so I didn't get the opportunity to do what you did, and, you know, go through the hallway through.
Yes, Sandra.
Hi.
Hi.
It was actually the same, um, number as before.
It was?
Yes, ma'am. Um, cause when Chrissy would do it, it was about the same, same amount of entries, around thirty. Um, we had sixty last year, but that was all because of the number of, of Soapbox Derby.
So you're saying the entry, the en-
He's talking about crowd participation.
Oh, the crowd.
The crowd seemed to be lighter.
Well, I think the Soapbox Derby brought that too, because if you think about it, all the, all the sponsors and the participants for the, for the Soapbox, they were there for that as well, so they stayed.
Okay, you're right, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Brechow.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was a great job by everybody. Um, it was safe, I had several compliments, you know, people telling me, I ran into friends there, and I said, "I didn't know you lived in Leon Valley," I don't, but, you know, they came to San Antonio, and they, they loved it. Um, the bands were great. Um, the one suggestion that I could make for improvement would be, um, the, the color guard or the presented, presentation of the colors at the beginning-
Right.
-was right at five o'clock, and the gates opened at five o'clock. So when that, that opening part, yeah, nobody was there. So I, I think maybe start the band, the music playing or something, um, and have people, when they open the gates, have people come in, then the band's playing, then maybe take a break and do the-
And you may, and you brought that suggestion-
There's somebody's writing this down.
And you brought that suggestion to my attention, cause we were up there, ready to go, but, but they had to go. They, they could not stick around, cause we were gonna flip it and let the band, or the, the, um, the ladies, Leslie sing, and then start, but they had to go, so we had to start it at five, and there was nobody there.
And, and, and you know that, and we wouldn't know that, because it's crazy over there at five o'clock, and none of us get to go over there usually, and so that's a really, we'll just flip it. We'll open it at five, and then start at five fifteen, or whatever.
Right.
Right?
Something like that, I think that'd be good.
All right, we can do that. Maybe just have nothing between five and five fifteen, cause if nobody's there, and they're barely getting there.
Well-
We could even start later.
I just think maybe they're playing a couple of songs as people are coming in, and people hear the music, you know, while they're milling around and stuff. I think that's all right.
You know, if someone gets there, uh, four-thirty, quarter of five, just let them in, uh, you know, why keep people at the gate, uh, till five o'clock?
Well, one reason is, uh, Mayor, Councilor Martinez is our insurance. When we say, we're gonna, that it's gonna happen from this time to this time, that's when it needs to happen. It's the same thing with the vendors. We had a really interesting situation, you wanna talk about making lemonade out of lemons? We did great, um, because, and Sierra is a major sponsor, and they messed up, and they didn't go in. Um, and it was, people were already there, um, so they were wanting to drive the car in. They said, "We can't do that," um, you know, somebody got hurt. But we're trying to figure out how we still assisted a major sponsor. So they got the spotlight, that piece of grass right when you came in, they got their, and Sierra signed, they got a car there. They got so much attendance and so much, um, publicity right there, that it worked out fine, but we wouldn't even, we couldn't even let them in.
Are they gonna want it again?
Uh, possibly, possibly. We'll, we'll talk about that next year, but we got all sorts of pictures, just in case, you know, there was any issues later on, so they could see how many people were there, how many people were in line looking at the car, how many people were, you know, standing around by it. So we came up with a solution on the fly, and it worked. And at first, they weren't happy about it, and by the end of the night, they were really happy about it. Um, so-
Very good.
That's the issue with bringing, you know, people in early.
Yes, please read that, uh, Councilor Rodriguez.
Um, I got a letter from a resident, and, um, she gives us, she says, "Short background. I have a few health problems there, lupus, osteoarthritis in both of my knees, bone spurs in both of my knees, and a few other health issues. The night of Fourth of July, my husband and I decided to walk up to the park to see the fireworks, since we live off Horse Tail and Checkren?"
Checkren.
Checkren. "I used my walker with wheels that night, because my knees were acting up and very painful. I told my husband that if I can't make it there or back, he could push on my walker as I sat in it. Well, I made it to the park okay, but afterwards, I only made it up a short distance on Forest Pine and told my husband that I could no longer, uh, I could no longer walk with my walker, because my knees were giving out and hurting really bad. So my husband started pushing me in the walker, and as I was steering the baby stroller, when this nice young man came up to us on Forest Pine and asked if he could help us, we said yes. He then proceeded to push the stroller, which was loaded down with a baby car seat, lawn chairs, blankets. When we got to syrup, his fiancee came by with her car, I got in. I don't know who drove, because there was another lady in the vehicle. But they took me home, and the gentleman, a female, and my husband walked my walker and the stroller back to our house. I didn't get their names, so I posted on Nextdoor my sincere heartfelt thank you to them, in hopes they would see it. I so greatly appreciated their help that night, to my husband, myself, and my knees, ha, ha, ha. It's people like them that restore my faith in humanity. Also, I want to sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, say thank you to all the firemen and EMS, the firemen and EMS person who helped me cross the creek bed to exit out of the park through the gate at Pos Road and Evers. I believe his name was, I think we said his name was Jordan Garcia. I also want to give a heartfelt thank you to all of the Leon Valley Police, Fire, and EMS for making this a safe event. Sincerely, Kimberly."
Okay, very good, thank you. Good letter, all right.
That concludes the report, I'm not gonna, on the city manager's report, you have the dates for the upcoming events. I think I'll stop reading those, cause I can tell I'm putting you to sleep when I'm reading them.
Well, I just, I had a follow-up on the, um, Coffee with the Mayor-
Yes, ma'am.
-and Council, um, can we advertise this week on the E-News?
We just, we just advertised today on Nextdoor?
Do we put Peachtree?
Uh, no, we just put cop, on Nextdoor, we just put Coffee with the Mayor and Council.
I think we need to put Peachtree, because there are some concerns.
She can put it on E-News, cause she, she's got it ready, she can just add it on there.
Could you add that? That'd be great, that'd be great, cause I know-
And I can revise the Nextdoor post too.
Okay, that's, that was a concern that I had, that we had to, okay. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. All right. So, um, moving to citizens to be heard and timing for objections to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council who would like to remove consent agenda item six point one or six point two for discussion? Okay, so you know when, we will adopt the consented agenda after we hear from the citizens and from our council. Uh, are there any citizens to be heard this evening that would like to address the council? Please come forward, just state your name and where you live, no, no address, but Leon Valley, San Antonio, Bernie, whatever. All right, thank you, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Name is Tina Chason, uh, Forest Oak subdivision. And basically, I just wanted to ask something concerning the Coffee with the Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
When I arrived for the three-twelve on the second, I was told I could not enter because of capacity.
Mm-hmm.
Is this not the place where we're having Coffee with the Mayor?
Oh, yes, that's right, we are having it here.
But what happens if we have, like in some of the past Coffees with the Mayor, all these tables set up, and you were talking about having them out in the anteroom as well?
Mm-hmm.
And the chairs with the table with a lot of people? What's gonna happen to the total capacity then?
I don't know.
Mayor, Ms. Chason, we actually discussed this this morning in this-
This morning?
Yeah, staff meeting. Um, the maximum, max, maximum occupancy in this room is seventy, uh, for the area. Um, and, uh, I was asked this morning if we've ever had seventy people at a coffee since I've been here, we have not. Um, it could happen this year, um, but-
Excuse me, we did, um, have it that one time when we were discussing, uh, the first time we had, uh-
The animal?
University of Texas come for the Banderas corridor, the, uh, Boulevard. Uh, there were a lot of people-
Mayor, Ms. Chason, that was almost a hundred people, and that was for the town hall when they came.
But didn't we have it also-
Yeah, we had, we had one before that, the October-
But UTSA didn't come for the October Coffee.
But it was still, that was the one, that time, so what do we do?
Uh, seventy people is the maximum occupancy, we've never had that before, I hope it doesn't happen. We just discussed this this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, we had, the council's decision to move the meeting was based on the, um, conference center not being available, right?
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Johnny? Good evening and welcome.
I'm Johnny Garrett, and I live in Leon Valley, and there's like three ordinances that I'm kind of protesting. I don't know if anybody can hear me.
I just, yeah, if you're speaking to the mics.
I have a neighbor behind me, and I have complained over the years. He's on, um, Settlers Ridge, um, and he doesn't take care of his, his property is against the back of my house. I have two people in the back and one on each side. He has vines on his fence that are big, they're popping, my privacy fence, my privacy fence is going like this. Uh, trees, every bird that has put a seed in that yard has grown into a tree. It's wall-to-wall tree, there's tall weeds, there's mosquitoes, there are rats. Uh, there's holes in the bottom of the walls in the garage and house area, and he refuses. I've reported it, uh, I guess he's fined or whatever. I talked to an officer a couple of weeks ago, when I was up here at a meeting, and he said that there is like a fund set aside that could maybe clean up the mess. I don't think anybody's tax dollars should do anything for him. I have offered to get some of the neighbors together, my friends together, take over chainsaws, whatever we need. I ask him over and over, can we come over and do that? I said, "What day of the week are you off?" He said, "I work seven days a week," and he's laughing. Uh, he refuses to do anything to his yard. I'm trying to sell my home, I don't need to be in a two-story anymore. I can't even use the upstairs, which is another ordinance. I'm only allowed to have two garage sales a year. I have a ton of stuff I need to get rid of that I've collected over many years. I have three attics, one in my garage, one in the upper story, and one in the lower story, it's a story and a half. You'd be surprised what stuff you put up there. When your kids leave home, take your skates, take their skateboards, take your bikes, because I'm tired of storing all this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, never-
Uh, when we got, uh, this is another ordinance, is the garbage collection. I would, lived in Austin, and my daughter passed away in July, Ju, June of seventeen with cancer. And I stayed in Austin, I'd come home on weekends, water my plants, mow my yard, do what it, check the mail, pay bills, do what I had to, and I was out. And I had garbage collection, uh, with waste management, I think, at that time, and that was fine. I needed to have garbage picked up occasionally, but sometimes I don't even live there. I'm retired, sometimes I travel, I'm trying to sell my house, uh, and I was told I have to have garbage collection. I, I don't use any processed foods, um, I don't bag my leaves, I mulch them. Uh, I don't have any garbage, I'm green, you know? I, if, if it's gonna be something, even my, uh, yogurt containers, I drill holes in the bottom, and I put plants in them, and I give them away. But, uh, and my acorns, I take to the park for the deer to eat. But anyway, I think I would like to know what I can do so I can have garage sales-
Okay.
That's not a pro, I don't know why that was ever passed. There's New Braunfels, you can have them anytime you want to. I just need to get rid of my stuff.
Gotcha, okay.
And I'd like my neighbor to clean up his property and not use our tax dollars to do it. He should be res, I'm tired of people not being responsible people. Everybody should be responsible for themselves.
Okay.
And I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you, Johnny, we appreciate it, so-
Thank you.
Um, can we address those three, maybe at a one?
Um, Mr. Demoline, can you, um, please speak to this young lady about the yard? And make sure that, um, we know the address. And, and I think the program that probably was discussed with you, ma'am, was our neighborhood renewal program, and no tax dollars, um, go towards that program. It's a volunteer program, and staff comes in on Saturdays, and we volunteer our time to clean up people's backyards.
I've often taken my family and clients over there, and you, I mean, I'm not kidding, it's wall-to-wall tree.
Okay. Johnny, you know what, we're, we're being recorded, so we can't-
If you don't mind-
That's okay.
Just discuss, Mr. Demoline is the one that can help you back there.
Yeah.
And he, he'll walk with you outside, that way we get your help right now.
And, and about the garbage, that's by ordinance?
The garbage is by ordinance, everybody in Leon Valley has to have garbage service.
Did you hear that, Johnny? Every, by ordinance, everyone in the city of Leon Valley.
Sometimes I don't, I don't-
I don't know how you get around it.
I have a thing for a service that I don't use. It's not like I have baby diapers at home.
Right, okay. Come back up to the podium then, to be continued.
You get to an age, I don't have any disposable things, I don't have baby diapers. I can understa, I don't have elderly diapers yet either.
[laughing]
There might, maybe next year I might.
Yeah.
But right now, there's- But right now, there's, I eat some of my meals out. I do not do fast food because I was putting too much weight on, and I did a lot of research of what we should eat and what we shouldn't eat when my daughter was dying of cancer. I don't eat any processed foods. I don't have cereal. There's nothing to go in a garbage can.
Okay. I'm not sure, I know we were under a contract for about six and a half, six, at least six more years, five and a half years.
I've talked to Tiger. And I paid Waste Management, and I, you know, at the time, I wasn't living there. So, I called Tiger, and I said, "I don't live there. I won't have anything. I'm there on the weekends, and I'm back out again." And that went on for months and months. And I didn't have the service. So, and now I don't need the service.
Okay.
We have the same ordinance under Waste Management that we have under Tiger, and that's that every resident is supposed to have garbage service and water service.
It's valuable if you have garbage, but things change in your life.
So, that's a council decision.
There's point in time where I won't need car insurance because I'm not going to be able to drive. That's a service, but I don't use it.
Yeah, that's a council decision. That's a policy decision, an ordinance is.
And same with the garage sale. That's a policy as well.
Correct.
We have two.
But y'all can change it if you want to. You can change it. It's up to y'all to do so. And I sure hate to go to jail in Leon Valley, because I will protest it.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Then, before we move to announcements by the mayor and council members, can everyone in the chamber please join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Mayor Protam. Monica Alcacer, I believe your birthday was Saturday? We're not going to ask you how young you are.
How about you, Mike Notton? His, too.
Oh.
It was Saturday, July the 6th. So, here's her birthday cake from the council.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor Monica Alcacer.
And Michael.
Happy birthday to you.
And many more. Congratulations. Well, they had a nice cake there.
I just have one thing to say. A few years back, I had started getting older, and then I stopped, and I'm good with that.
I agree. All right. Thank you. All right. Very good. So, announcements, Councilor Charles.
I wanted to say, too, that I've heard a lot of great compliments about the Fourth of July event, and they especially said it was safe. Safe, they felt comfortable, the family had a great time. And although I was not able to be there on the fourth, I showed up early on the fifth so I could help pick up trash. And I enjoyed that, so. And I want to thank, excuse my tardiness tonight.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Just second what Ms. Charles said, and not to forget also, happy late birthday to Chief. That's it.
All right. Councilor Alcacer, anything else?
Yes, I heard good things, too, and we weren't able to participate, but we, about nine o'clock that evening, we went out to try to come over to the park and weren't able to get there. But we saw a lot of people at Walgreens and said, "Maybe they're having a party." It turned out, they were, I didn't even realize it was still open until we were all leaving, but there were at least 200 people at Walgreens, so you can add that to your total.
Really? You mean watching the fireworks? Watching the fireworks. Okay. In the parking lot?
And you, I probably shouldn't say it, but there's a tremendous view from there. And it was very, very nice, and the fireworks weren't as loud from there. They were tempered by some of the trees, but the view was outstanding. Now, the fireworks are kind of iffy, and they didn't have a finale, which a bunch of people were complaining about. But, and a lot of in-between pauses, long pauses. So, and then after that would come some duds. So, it was not the best fireworks. I guess they got used up from a year ago in the rain, but I don't know what happened, but they didn't live up to par. And that's, that's the only thing.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Martinez.
Just thank you to the police department and, you know, all the staff, really. I've said, like I said before, I really liked the way it was set up and the exit for the people walking down paths. Everybody, and even I made a comment to Sandra. She was there late Friday night, and was there at six o'clock Thursday morning. I don't know how she did it. She's Superwoman. But we do have good staff here, and it was a great show.
Thank you. Councilor Bradshaw.
Yeah, as I said before, it was a very well put together experience for the Fourth of July. The food trucks were excellent. The bands were excellent. I think everybody I talked to had a good time. And then I would also like to say congratulations to the Women's World Cup, the US Women's Soccer Team for winning their fourth World Cup, second in a row.
That's right. That was awesome.
Let's invite them to Leon Valley.
Yeah. Send them an invite.
All right. Very good. Just again, thank you to everybody. It was an excellent Fourth of July. Really appreciate all the participation and all the hard work that went into it by all of the staff, police, fire, you name it, public works. And so, anyway, thank you, and we look forward to a better and fourth next year. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, 6.1 and 6.2, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilor Alcacer and a second by Councilor Rodriguez to approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion does carry. Moving then to agenda item number seven, ordinances. This is our second read, which we will vote on this evening. And Ms. Poslafiev, please read that ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing a budget adjustment and amending the general fund of the City of Leon Valley, Texas Municipal Budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019 in the amount of $12,955 for the purpose of purchasing new library software for security and time management, providing a repealer, severability, and savings clauses, and providing for an effective date.
May I interrupt?
You may.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if all of you would join me in thanking Sandy for her years of service to the city of Leon Valley. We're happy for you. I'm excited for you, for your new adventure. I look forward to keeping in touch. And I just don't know that you'll be at the next council meeting. Staff is going to have a lunch, and I know the board of directors are going to do something for you. But I don't know that you'll be before this council again, and so I just wanted to acknowledge your efforts and just what a wonderful library Leon Valley has. And I know so much of that is due to you, and I want to say thank you.
You bet. Very good. We're going to miss you, and come versus gain, for sure. So, we thank you.
Don't say anything.
Okay.
So far, it's been a very smooth transition. Everything's, but Sandy is aiding in that. So, thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Underwood, do we have any updates from the last presentation? Okay.
I'm extremely sorry you're leaving, but I'm happy to move to accept 8.1 as written.
No, 7.1.
7.1. I'm sorry, looking at 8.1.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilor Alcacer and a second by Councilor Martinez to approve ordinance number 7.1 as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion does carry. Thank you so much. Best of luck to you, Sandy. We really appreciate all that you've done. All right. As per the councilors' consensus, we are going to pass on 8.1 until Mr. Rautuna has a chance to bring it back. So, we move to agenda, regular agenda, 8.2, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution Awarding a Bid and Authorizing the City Manager to Sign a Contract with McDonald Electric in the Amount of $176,469 with 15% for contingency for the Glass Hill Emergency Generator Project. Good evening, Mr. Demoline, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, thank you. The purpose of this item is to accept a bid and authorize our city manager to enter into a contract with McDonald Electric in the amount of $176,469 with 15% for contingency. The project consists of constructing an emergency generator located at the Grass Hill Station, which is at 6621 Grass Hill. The generator will, of course, generate enough power for our station during any prolonged energy outages, and that will enable us to power up our well, the Grass Hill well, the three distribution pumps that are at that station, all of the equipment with our variable frequency drive, our chlorination, our SCADA system, and our lights. The project's scope is a generator that is a 450-kilowatt diesel with an automatic switch. It'll be mounted on a foundation, and that will be set outside our control rooms at the Grass Hill Station. We had a pre-bid meeting on the fourth, and then also a bid opening on June the 11th. We had a total of six companies submit bids. They were McDonald Electric, Central Electric, Robele, INE Constructors, Alterman, Teesh Contracting, and Red River General Contracting. And those are the bid amounts. Our estimated budget for this project was a total of $378,400. The bid came in, as I mentioned, at $176,469. So, our actual costs for the project are $210,869. And these funds were budgeted in this current fiscal year under the water utility. So, we recommend the city council approve this resolution awarding the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into this contract. I do apologize, that amount is not correct.
I was going to say, I didn't think that was.
It is the $176,469. Under our C. Statement, Social Equity Enhancements to our Water Distribution System ensures that all citizens have fresh, safe drinking water at all times, which adds to our general quality of life for all citizens. Economic Development, Improved Water Infrastructure helps us ensure an efficient delivery of service, which may encourage relocation. And Environmental Stewardship, the emergency generator will help us ensure our pumps maintain water pressure within our distribution system, and that could reduce the amount of water loss due to any main breaks. With that, Mayor and council, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Did we not have a generator at all for this pump, or is this a replacement?
This is a brand-new set generator for, for this location.
So, we didn't, we never had a generator before?
We actually have a portable generator.
Okay.
But it is, it's not large enough to power up the actual well motor and then all of the distribution pumps that we have. So, this generator will, will be sufficient in that, in that area.
Right. And I saw that LNV did the analysis and checked the references. Has this company been in business for quite a long time?
Yes, Mayor. Our engineer did do the background research on them, and everything checked out with their references.
Okay. Very good. I'm always amazed at the discrepancy, you know, between all of the bids, so that's why I was wondering.
We've actually had some pretty good bid responses.
Right. You sure did. Thank you. Those are my questions. Councilor Alcacer.
So, I was hoping we could save another 17 grand by looking at their, the engineering costs are normally 10%, and so they took 34.4 based on what they thought it would cost. And since it came in at about half of that, it seems their fee should be 10% of the $176. How does that work?
That's a good point.
Well, we can actually, we can visit with them about that. A lot of those costs that does include the engineering and design, and then helping us with the bid process. But, you know, that is a point that you bring up. It's a good point, and we can certainly visit with LNV.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez.
Just out of curiosity, a lot of the bids that come out, there's a 15% contingency fee. Is that ever used, or is it rarely used, or?
We, we actually haven't had to use that very often. Occasionally, there may be a change order. We did have some change orders involved in the well project. That was a large project for us. We typically, we've been fairly, we've kept the change orders to a minimum on these projects, but we just always add that 15% just in case.
I know, because it's, you know, I'm involved in contracting all the time, and it's, you run into unexpected things.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm just curious how many times you had to use it.
Okay. Councilor Bradshaw.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the selection criteria was to select McDonald Electric. Was it mostly based on the lowest pricing, or was there other criteria that you used? Yes, Councilor, the, it's a competitive sealed bid, so we are going with the lowest bid. But we do check, of course, their, their references. Right. And, you know, being that it was not a request for proposal, those are mainly the things that we're looking at, and making sure that the bid package was, they submitted everything that was required. Okay. So, it's, I mean, like you said, it's a sealed bid, but they're all, they're all qualified? Yes, actually, this group, all of those companies are very well-qualified. All right. Okay.
Since he hasn't experienced it before, the criteria are put out to what they're looking for. Are they not ahead of time?
Well, yes, we do have, the engineer basically develops the plans, if you will, for this project. And so, and then all of the bid items, we do delineate those, and so they, we ask that they provide a price for each itemized list, or each item, per se. But those are basically the requirements under this type of bid. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Alcacer.
Any other questions from the councilors? Ms. Frederick.
Councilor Bradshaw, just wanted to address your question that the requirements for competitive sealed bids is in the Local Government Code at Section 252. So, if you want to take a look at it, it lays out everything the city, a city municipality has to do in order to put out for competitive sealed bids, and how, you know, what criteria we use and how we respond. So, it's all there.
You said Section 252?
I believe it's Section 252 of the Local Government Code.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Frederick.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, what is the pleasure of the council on this particular agenda item? We, we are able, since it's a resolution, to go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Okay. Well, I move that we approve.
It says it's first reading.
No, 8.2. It's a resolution.
Oh, 8.2.
Yes, sir.
That we approve the, awarding the bid to McDonald Electric as presented. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilor Alcacer and a second by Councilor Rodriguez to award the bid as presented to McDonald Electric regarding the Grass Hill Emergency Generator. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion does carry. Thank you very much. I'm just curious what we're going to do with that extra money that we have left over, you know? So, anyway, so I'm sure we'll come back.
We're really excited about the project, and this is the, you know, by basically drilling the two new wells and the saw's interconnection and having this in place, it really is a great thing.
And then also, if you'll follow back up with this regarding Ms. Alcacer's point about the contingent fee?
I sure will. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving then to Agenda Item 8.3, Discussion and Possible Action on Attorney Ryan Henry's Contract Regarding the Staff and Counselor Complaints Against Counselor Martinez. This was an agenda item requested by Counselor Alkisar and Counselor Charles.
Yes, and I think that's...
The only thing that has changed in this presentation at all, Mayor and Council, is the amounts. And so there's your new pie chart as of today, and I emailed you earlier, Mayor. Like, we got it at 2:00 something this afternoon, and I think you had it probably before 3:00. But I was hoping you had been able to look at it before this. I didn't have time. But, so far, you have $31,738 on the lawsuit, Martinez versus City of Leon Valley. You have $30,700, almost $800 on the investigation, and then $4,000. And I know, Mayor, last time, I absolutely was not trying to single you out. What Ryan and I were discussing was the things that were not expected that he had to do, such as the seven-page memo on why the city manager had authority, the research that he had to do on the quorum, and there was one other thing. But anyway, so it was just atypical expenditures that I didn't know how to categorize, like which one to put them under. And so, you were absolutely seeking pertinent information, I just didn't know how to categorize them, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a couple of motions, Mayor.
Okay, I had asked what this was in regard, and both Sandra and the city manager said we didn't know, you just wanted it on. I didn't, I didn't. And I said, is this a budget adjustment? Is it what? I didn't know.
You were always talking about it not supposed to be, or whatever. Anyway, I wanted to make it presented as a council thing at this point. So, my first motion is, I move that we ratify and approve the law office of Ryan Henry for his retention for performing an investigation into the complaints filed against Counselor Benny Martinez, including the role of conflict counsel to the city council relating to the complaints filed against Counselor Benny Martinez.
I second.
I second that, okay.
I thought we were going to have a discussion on this before a motion was going to be made.
Well, we have discussion right now. So we have a motion by Counselor Alkisar and a second by Counselor Charles to ratify and approve Ryan Henry's contract, I guess, for conflict counsel and investigation. Is that what I hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and further discussion? Yes, Counselor?
I thought from our last meeting that he said his role of conflict counsel was finished, or sorry, as investigator was finished. So now he's assuming the role of conflict counsel only.
That is correct, Mayor Counselor Bradshaw. But the first agreement with him was about him doing a pre-litigation investigation and acting as conflict counsel.
Right, the original part.
Exactly, so that would be the green part.
Right, so now, going forward, it's just conflict counsel, is that correct?
Because there's no more investigation to do.
And our city attorney has conflicted out?
That's correct. Okay, Counselor Martinez.
I wish the timeline was presented here, because the part that I have very much difficulty with is that Ryan Henry completed his investigation on April 2nd. At that time, his job was finished. He should not have billed the city for one penny after that. In fact, his original contract was to investigate two and only two complaints. And it kind of morphed, and, you know, there was no other council authorization for him to do any more, and then even for him to spend any time investigating Larry Prophet. So, you know, he just, it appears like he found himself a cash cow, and he's going to milk this for everything he got. Like I said, after April 2nd, his job was finished. He should have walked out of the room and never been heard from again. You know, we had the illegal meeting on April 16th, where he determined that the council, with only two members on it, can conduct city business, and that is definitely a violation. So, you know, he caused that illegal meeting, and that's what caused, that's what kind of forced my hand into filing the temporary restraining order. Because, you know, the city, the council did something illegal. So, at that point, when I filed the suit to stop the illegal meeting for the 30th, the city council should have hired an attorney, whether it be Mr. Ryan or somebody else. The city council, and being the mayor is the head of the city council, she should have signed the agreement with whatever attorney the city council agreed to hire. And, you know, that, at that point, the city manager should not have signed any agreement with Ryan Henry to continue. That should have been a council. If you read the charter, it says "City Council shall," "City Council shall," not "City Manager," "City Council." That's all I have to say.
Okay, yeah. Well, you know, I just wish we had been able to do this earlier, but I guess his opinion about his authority came, I don't know, I don't even know when that was. We've been, we've had so much paper in this case. But, anyway, I just was wondering when we were going to actually, you know, approve it, because we have not approved it. I was always under the impression, or of the opinion, I've said this to Mr. Henry, that the council was supposed to vote on the investigation of the council to council. If it was the staff, that was separate. I didn't have an issue with that. It was just, I thought we should have done it a long time ago, so, anyway. But that was not his opinion at the time, so, anyway. We're here today to approve and ratify, is what the motion says. Yes, Mr. Bradshaw.
Since it's only for conflict counsel, I would recommend we hire a different attorney than Ryan Henry, since he's already been so involved in everything. If it's only conflict counsel for the purpose of providing legal guidance in the 312 hearing, I don't see why we can't use a different attorney. It would also allow us to change the dates back to the original dates of the 18th, or 17th and 18th, if they're available.
Mayor, Counselor Bradshaw, I think you would be doing a big disservice to the citizens of Leon Valley, because this conflict counselor already knows the case. For somebody else to go through all the papers the mayor has talked about would be very expensive, just to learn the case. And all we have left is the second part of the 312 hearing, and he's done. So it doesn't make sense, in the middle of the 312 hearing, to change horses and to have to, the citizens to have to pay somebody to educate themselves on this whole history.
I don't think, I don't think that's the point of conflict counsel. It's to tell you if you're doing things out of order, not following procedures. And the whole 312 hearing procedures is only nine or 10 pages long, I believe. So it wouldn't, they don't have to familiarize theirself with the whole case. That's my point, is he's so familiar with the whole case, I think it's hard for him to show impartiality.
It's a council decision. Okay, anyone else?
I think that what happened in the court was the court determined we could proceed and did proceed, and with any case, anyone familiar in any capacity with law, nobody steps in midstream unless there's a death or other incapacitation. Nobody wants to do that. And I think we need to proceed. We're halfway, or maybe more than halfway through. It needs to just come to a conclusion, and whatever happens, happens, but that's the way it is. We brought this because it became cumbersome and a diversion to try to put the blame on a person who was given to the city by TML, and everything has been explained from start to finish as to how and why it happened. So, that's why we came forward with this.
I just wanted to add that, just to follow up on what Mr. Martinez said, the council on the 16th, the two-member council people who had passed the ordinance, 312 ordinances, and you set the 312 hearing for April 30th. In order for that to stop, you had to file your TRO. But you went to the, my understanding was, the judge ruled that you had to have two readings to adopt the ordinance. That's what the whole purpose of that was, not anything other than two readings to adopt the 312 ordinance, and that's what happened. And so, on May the 10th, Judge Poser, at the suggestion, or at the comment of Mr. Henry, he said, "We are going to set the two readings for the 312 hearing." So that was the whole purpose, is that you wanted to make sure that those were properly evaluated or properly done. Because Mr. Henry was saying we had, at the court, he had said, "We had the 312 hearing ordinances already in place," and we didn't. So that was the issue, that was the issue, and that's what costs so much money.
I'm sorry, I don't agree that that was the issue. From everything that has been said, including by you, it included trying to delay 60 days. In fact, even the other day, at the hearing, the very first slide that Mr. Martinez puts up is, 60 days has passed, you can't do anything. And that was the whole theory behind what was being, what it went to court to get it passed, because April 30th would have brought the, been within the 60-day limit on that particular issue. In addition, the council, through the manager, through the manager's staff, attempted numerous times to get the third council person involved in it. He absolutely never responded one single time to any request for a hearing, and every date that we suggested, and then you stopped responding, you couldn't do it, or wouldn't, you know, for whatever reason, you weren't unavailable. Anyway, all of that is passed, we're here now, you're still arguing that nothing's valid, we're trying to, in our opinion, it's valid, and I'd like to have a vote, I'd like to call the vote.
All right, just a clarification, because we keep, this keeps coming up, that we delay, delay, delay. Mr. Henry's report was March 15th, 2019. The executive session was April 2nd, 2019, 17 days later. I think that's pretty reasonable, so, we finally did get it set. But it was, yeah, we did have to go back and forth because of people's schedules, but I don't think that was an unreasonable delay, so, anyway. All right, so we'll take a vote. Ms. Posley, if you'll please call the roll.
Counselor Charles?
Four.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Four.
Counselor Alkisar?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
No.
And Counselor Bradshaw?
No.
Motion carries three fours and two against.
My second motion is, I move that we ratify and approve the law office of Ryan Henry for his retention for litigation counsel to represent the City of Leon Valley in the case of Benny Martinez versus the City of Leon Valley, Clause Number 2019 CI 08343, filed in Bear County District Court, San Antonio, Texas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Alkisar and a second by Counselor Charles to ratify and approve the retention of Ryan Henry as litigation counsel for the Martinez versus the City of Leon Valley lawsuit. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Martinez.
Again, this is something after the fact to correct something that was done improperly. I maintain from day one that the mayor or the city council should have signed the agreement to extend Mr. Henry's work on this project, not the city manager. She exceeded her authority, just like she did with the red light camera.
Mayor, Counselor Martinez, just so you know, there was nothing signed to extend the contract. This was a separate contract, and the city manager has up to $15,000 authority. We're not near the $50,000 yet, when you look at the two contracts, so we're still within authority. But I just want to correct you for the record, this is not an extension, this was a separate contract, because it was a whole separate case.
30 and 31 is kind of over $50,000.
These are two separate contracts, and it is also typical, I've done it ever since I've been here, the city manager signs contracts with council to represent us. I've signed contracts with the aquarium, for representation on the aquarium, representation on the soccer fields, representation for any other lawsuit.
You're right, 100%. But you've had city council approval to sign them. You did not have city council approval to sign the red light cameras?
No, sir.
You did not have, it was done after the fact. It was done after the fact. And there's also state law that...
Excuse me, the mayor has asked...
I just, just tone it down just a little bit, that's all, I don't want you to get out of control.
There's also state law with the purchasing, that, yes, you do have $50,000, but if it's broken up into two or three contracts, let's say there's a 25 and a 25 and a $25,000 contract, the aggregate is over the $50,000, and that violates state law.
Mayor, Counselor Rodriguez, if it's for the same thing, I agree with you 100%. However, these are two separate matters. I had no idea you would sue the City of Leon Valley, and I was required to get the City of Leon Valley the taxpayer representation, so that's what I did.
For an illegal city council meeting.
That's what I did. You actually lost the hearing.
No, I didn't. I won the TRO, and the, Ryan said that they would go forward and have the two hearings the way that our ordinance allows, our demands. So, the judge cited that since we're going to follow procedures, then he would continue. But I did win the TRO to stop the illegal city council meeting.
Ms. Frederick?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to correct Counselor Martinez that that is not state law, that it's not the aggregate amount of several contracts. We could contract with the same vendor or contractor for different projects, and it's separate contracts. This is for, or for different matters. This is two contracts for different matters, one for investigation, one for conflict, conflicted out attorney. So now he's representing the city in my stead. Those are two separate contracts. State law says it's up to $50,000 for each contract, that's a separate matter.
Okay, yes, Counselor Martinez.
I will send a letter to the Attorney General and get, see about getting an opinion from him.
Okay, all right. And then investigation, all right. Anything else? Any other questions, comments? Okay, very good. So, we do have a motion and a second on the table, as so stated. And Ms. Posley, if you'll please call the roll.
Counselor Rodriguez?
In favor.
I'm sorry, I skipped you, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Counselor Charles?
In favor, yes.
Counselor Alkisar?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
No.
And Counselor Bradshaw?
No.
The motion does carry three fours and two against, all right. So, moving then to our last agenda, is there, is that, was that it, Ms. Alkisar? I'm sorry, did you have anything else? I just didn't want to presume that you were not finished. Thank you. Moving then to Agenda Item Number Nine, Citizens to be Heard. Anyone from the chambers that would like to address the council, please come forward. Just state your name and where you live. Thank you.
Good evening again. Tina Chason, Forest Oaks. I had to give this some thought, so I wrote things down this time.
Do you want to make sure you're speaking into the microphone? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes. That's better.
Okay. Once again, I stand before this council, guests, and fellow citizens with a very heavy heart, disbelief, and total frustration. Over the past two special city council sessions, I have watched and heard such disrespect, most all of it directed towards our mayor, Chris Riley. This is not acceptable behavior from anyone under parliamentary procedure or Roberts Rules of Order. In the back alleys, yes, but not inside our council chambers. Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019, at the first special council session, I was denied entry by police because the maximum amount of citizens inside had been reached. And this was at 5:17 PM for a 5:30 meeting. I was informed that I would have to wait outside until someone left the building, making space for me or others on a first-come, first-served basis. When I was finally allowed to enter, I noticed there were numerous police officers, both uniformed and in plain clothes, occupying space inside that could have and should have been provided for our citizens. Why were so many police needed? Television people were also there, taking up total available and needed space for us, the citizens. I would also like to express my disdain towards Counselor Alkisar and Charles for voting against Counselor Bradshaw's motion that the citizens to be heard would be allowed at the end of the 312. You voted it down. We elected you guys to represent us, the citizens, and on this issue, stifling the people wanting to express their concerns to you, you voted no. Perhaps the next election time, we will vote no to you and have the video proof of how you have not represented us, the citizens, and our concerns. In my opinion, the 312 hearing is an unofficial court held by a group of people in order to try someone that is regarded, especially without solid evidence, as guilty of a crime or misdemeanor. The true definition of a kangaroo court. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
May I correct one thing that was non-factual, Mayor?
Certainly. Go ahead.
The, there was no vote.
Right.
At all. So we did not vote no. There was no vote. Thank you.
And I'll just clarify the record. It failed for lack of a second. That's what happened. Okay. That's it. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Johnny Garrett, Leon Valley. I was reading, and I don't know where I read it. It may have been that book I had for, something for Leon Valley for 2017 that was mailed out, or maybe it was on the website. Maybe that's what it was. I'm not sure. But I was reading, and it could have been online, that people are, it said five city council members and the mayor. And you can vote if there is a tie, but everybody, you can't have a tie with five. You can have a tie with six, and the mayor would make the decision vote either way. I don't know, with a kangaroo court here, you have three, and then you have two. So no matter what they vote for, that's what's going to happen, and there is no other vote. This is not what the people want. Get out there and talk to people. See what they want. There were a lot of things that they should have reported to you, and they reported to the city manager. She should have told them. She knew. Did you not know? Did you not know?
Oh, we can't, we can't have a dialogue.
You can't have a dialogue.
You have to just address to the council.
She knew. And you knew. All of y'all knew. You went to the city manager. I don't approve of that. The two other people that are voting, you knew it was wrong. You knew to report it to the mayor, and not one of you followed protocol. And you want me to follow your ordinances? I don't think so, because I'm a mad citizen right now. I am very angry, and I'm very disgusted. And I'm disgusted with you, because there were pictures of her with a smile on her face. If she, any woman that was approached, all she has to do is say, "Back off, buddy." You never did that. You never called them on it, and you stated that you never told them to back off.
Okay.
You told the court, or the court, or your city, that you went up in a meeting and shook hands with a man, and then turned to Benny and shook hands with him. Why would you approach a man that has been sexually harassing you? I would stay away from him. And I noticed on the picture, you were standing right by him. Why didn't you stand over by the woman? You're not a very good example of a woman. And I don't think a lady either. Go ahead and laugh.
Thank you. Thank you, Johnny.
I'm going to make sure everybody I know knows what is, and I want to see y'all voted out, and some people fired.
Okay. This is very emotional. Thank you.
Because I'm crying.
I know you are.
I am angry.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Yes. Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, it's so easy for some people to try to judge somebody else's actions when they're not even there. How in the world are these people thinking that they can decide what is wrong, and they don't even know anything about what happened? They weren't there. They don't have sense enough to know that if they are not there and they don't have the information, they should just keep quiet.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're still in Citizens to Be Heard, so if anybody wants to speak, you may speak, up to five minutes. But let's, you know, keep it civil and respectful, please.
My name is Pat Martinez, Leon Valley. I agree with him. I was there. I was there with a photographer, I think his name is Adam Martinez, standing next to him, watching the pictures been made. There was no movement. Nobody moved, and that's it. I saw what I didn't see is what she claimed, and that's the truth.
Anyone else? Okay. If, that concludes our Citizens to Be Heard. If there's no objection, we move to adjourn on Tuesday, July 9th, at 8:45 in the evening. Good evening.